All righty, Verizon time has it at 3:00 PM. I'd like to welcome you all to the September meeting of the Middlesex County Board of Supervisors and welcome a nice crowd of folks who are taking interest in their county's government. At this point, I would like to ask Wayne Jesse if he would open the meeting with prayer, followed by Matt Walker leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord have our heads in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, I'd like to thank you once again for letting us see another day, dear Lord. And dear Lord, let's pray for those citizens out in Texas who lost their lives from mass shooting. And also, dear Lord, let's pray for those citizens with Hurricane Barron that are coming up the coast. Pray for them, for the citizens, and hope they come, moves out of our way. And dear Lord, let us, and dear Lord, also let us make wise and just decisions as we conduct county business this season. He's in all the blessings in the heavenly Father's name. Amen.
With all citizens of our nation, rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two things before we get started. A number of you have been kind enough to ask how I'm doing, and I'm doing better all the time. I had four discs taken out about two months ago, and hopefully next week I can start getting out of this brace. So that explains why I'm such a stiff, hot-under-the-collar sort of individual. The other thing, I'll make an apology. I was out of town until late yesterday and did not have the usual time to pore over my agenda and the board packet. So if I stumble along a little bit, just forgive me if you will. First order of business is the approval of the consent agenda.
Yes, I would like to move that we find the consent agenda okay.
I second it.
Motion and seconded. Hearing no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. So ordered. At this point, I'd like to open the meeting to public comments. If we have any members of the public, we'd like to address the board. Your limit is three minutes. We ask that you come up and state your name and address for the record, and please stay with the three minutes in all fairness to the citizens that are here. Yes, sir.
My name is Don Burton. I live on Long Point Lane in Topping. I'm here to address the, about the car issue, the old cars that people want to get rid of. I rebuild old cars, and I've been doing it here in the county for 22 years. And I don't really know that I'm doing anything that's impacting anybody else. So I'd really like to say that I'm not happy with being told that I also have to get rid of some of my cars. Most of them are over 35 years old, and it's really difficult to find parts if you're building a car. It's kind of like building a boat, you know? You need a lot of time and patience to do that. But that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next citizen, please.
Hello, I'm Monica Sanders of Topping, Virginia. There are two kinds of people in this world. One kind likes to live at home and mind their own business and take care of the things at their house and not get in other people's business. The other people, the other group of people like to tell other people how to live their lives and what they should do better and so forth and so on. And they come up with things like this ordinance, and I realize that our county attorney was asked to do it, that I'm here about this unlicensed car thing. First of all, it violates the 14th Amendment. You should be able to have things and keep them on your property. My husband and I are allergic to car payments, and this is why we build our cars and so that we can drive them and go places in them, and it works out very well. There is no law that requires anyone to protect your neighbor's property values. That is not in the Constitution. To charge $100 per car per year for a carcass that you hold, to me, is egregious. Our cars are like 1986. A lot of you have enough money to buy a brand-new car or something close to it. Our used cars have gotten real expensive because Obama had you destroy all the engines in all of the used cars that you traded in, so that really bumped the price of used cars way up. But, and I checked with Middlesex Metals, if you have a title to a car and you drive it in, they will take it. But if you tow it in, it's gonna, you have to take the tires off the car and you have to take all the fluids out. That's the oil, the gas, the Freon, or anything else that you have in your car has to be removed. The cost of removing that, we have a lot of people who have a car and they drove it and then it broke, and they got, you know, a thing where they had to, they were gonna, it's gonna cost them, you know, $10 gazillion to have it fixed, or at least that's amounted to them about how much it's gonna cost you to have it done. So that is what Middlesex Metals will do if somebody has to do it, and they usually don't have a way to tow it in. So what's next? After we pay for cars, are we going to have to pay for boats, bicycles, furniture? How much is this gonna cost us? It doesn't make any sense that we are gonna be having to charge for this. You know, we keep a fairly neat place, and sometimes somebody says you want some trees, and we have some logs there for a while till we have time to split it. Beyond that, we keep a nice house and we mind our own business. And I hope the county, Dave Kreutz is a wonderful guy, he's the least egregious person I know. And thank you for listening to the comments.
Thank you. Next citizen, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Harold Muller. I live in Kilmer's Point. The subject I'd like to address this afternoon is school bus garage that's looking to be built in the near future. My wife attends all of the school board meetings. I have another meeting I have to go to, so I don't go there. At the last school board meeting, it was determined that the school bus garage was going to go over the anticipated budget. It costs significantly more because building materials have grown up. My question to you all is, do you all really know whether or not we need a school bus garage? Do you know whether the costs that we incur as citizens in Middlesex County for repairing a bus are greater than, less than, or equal to what an outside service station could do or garage? If you don't know those things, and I suggest that you don't, because I can't find it any place, then why would you want to go ahead and build a garage until you determine what the cost of doing business is? How many buses did the school bus garage fix during the three months that the children were out of school? I dare say very few. So we were paying for an entity that's not doing anything for those months of the year or doing very little. I don't like to see people lose their job, but I think there's a responsibility as good stewards of the money that the taxpayers provide to the county to at least make a determination are, is that school bus garage a benefit to the citizens? Are we saving money with it? Is it just as good to have them working there as it would be to take it out? Or would we save money by taking the vehicle to Wears, Whitmore Chevrolet, or wherever we would take it? Now, I know some people say that you need special tools to work on buses. I don't know what they are, but that ought to be taken into consideration and doing an evaluation of what we are spending on that, on that function. At least let's do that before we go out and spend a great deal of money investing in something that may be costing the citizens more money than we could have it done elsewhere. I suggest to you all to at least put together a committee, and I'd be more than willing to sit on that committee, to determine what the cost for a simple oil change would be at the school bus garage, what it costs to change the transmission, what it costs, and to look at putting together a bid, a request for proposals to be submitted to other organizations within the area to at least make a simple determination and let the citizens of the county know you are spending their money wisely, no matter which way you go. And I'm not saying do away with the bus garage, I'm just saying have the, have the data there to make the decision, which I don't think you have. And if you do, please bring it forward and make me look like a fool. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Hal. Next citizen, please.
Good afternoon, I'm Lud Kimbrough from Kennard Lane in Deltaville. The Atlanta State Marine Fisheries Commission has determined that striped bass are currently overfished and overfishing is occurring, and cuts are coming. ASMFC encourages the public to submit comments on its just-released draft addendum to the Interstate Fishery Management Plan for Atlantic Striped Bass. Comments can be made through October 7th. Organizations planning to release an action alert in response to this draft addendum should contact Max Appleman at 703-842-0740. I encourage the Board of Supervisors to release an action alert to the public to make sure our voices are heard regarding this incredibly important economic engine in Middlesex County. In April, the state canceled the trophy striped bass season as part of an effort to guard against overfishing. VMRC has just humanely approved emergency regulations that will limit recreational fishermen this fall to a single fish between 20 and 26 inches. Previously, anglers were allowed to keep two fish, one between 20 and 28 inches, and one allowed to exceed 28 inches with no maximum size, a trophy. Deputy Commissioner Ellen Boland said the commission staff found that 2018 was the lowest harvest of striped bass since a moratorium was placed on the fishery in 1990. From 2015 to 2018, 45% of the recreational harvest in numbers of fish in the Atlantic region from Maine to North Carolina came from the Chesapeake Bay. A 2019 report from Southwick Associates indicated that 97% of total economic contribution associated with striped bass fishing came from the recreational sector. According to the report, total revenues in the commercial sector, Maine to North Carolina, were $19.8 million in 2016, while total expenditures for the recreational sector amounted to $6.3 billion. The contribution of the recreational sector to the region's GDP in total was $7.7 billion and supported 104,867 jobs. We cannot stand idly by and watch the county's greatest assets disappear into thin air. This board has taken a stand on offshore drilling, but I have not seen a position on recreational fishing or perhaps the most divisive related issue, the Menhaden Reduction Fishery. I'll report more on this on the future, but I'm out of time today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next citizen, please. Hearing, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period. As you all know, we've got a fairly, not fairly, a very dangerous storm working its way up the coast, and at 3:15, David Lehman and I will have to excuse ourselves for a conference call with the Governor's Emergency Response Team, and Mr. Mansfield will take over the chair for that period. But at this point, I'd like to ask David to come up and give us an update on the storm.
You've got two minutes.
Two minutes.
It's a bad one, right?
No, the, so we started on this on Friday with conference call with the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. We had another one yesterday and another one today, and they're playing throughout the rest of the week. Right now, the storm track is, that's the 2:00 PM storm track that you're seeing up there from the National Hurricane Center. Really since yesterday, the storm hadn't changed, hadn't, had a lot of deviation from the track that you're seeing right there. As the storm's starting to weaken, it started to weaken today, as the winds weaken, the wind field expands, so we're looking at a larger wind field as the storm weakens, as it comes up the coast. We're most likely to see tropical storm winds starting overnight Thursday into Friday morning if this track remains on its same track that is currently being displayed. The storm will be off the North Carolina coast around Hatteras as either a Cat 1 or a Cat 2 storm is what the predictions models indicate at this point in time. As of today, they've already got hurricane watches in effect all the way up to Duck, North The biggest impact, I think that we're gonna possibly see if the storm remains on the same track from what we're getting from Wakefield is some tropical storm winds, several inches of rain. There, in certain areas, could see up to seven inches of rain, some coastal flooding, and some significant beach erosion. The southeast portion of Virginia is really the biggest target that we, that they're indicating in Region 5. Remember, Region 5 runs everything from Westmoreland County down to Virginia Beach, so it's a large geographical area when we start talking about Region 5. But they're saying that, like I said, that we'll see the effects starting Thursday evening into Friday. So with coordinating with the state, we're also coordinating with their regional partners. I've talked to Matthews today and Gloucester today and reached out to them. We've, Sheriff Bushy and I spoke today. We've reached out to fire rescue, social services. Everybody is, is getting prepared at this point in time in the event that we, we do have some impact from this, from this event. We are monitoring the storm closely, and it's still very early on. The track could change for the better or for the worse, but it's still too far out to really know what's gonna happen yet.
Thank you, sir. Keep your eye on the watch so that we can dial in at the right time if I'm doing something else.
Yes, sir, I will. The other thing I want to, want to stress is this is a time that our citizens need to get prepared as well. We have been reaching out on social media. Kevin posted the hurricane, same hurricane tips, preparedness tips that we posted at the beginning of hurricane season. We're also posting the Wakefield weather reports. They give us a report in the morning, they also give us a report in the evening. We're posting them on social media as well every day.
Well, as you know, you've got a deuce and a half at your disposal also.
Exactly. Thanks.
Thank you, David. Sheriff Bushy, would you like to introduce the next order of business, or you just want me to handle it from A to Z? You've got two items of business. If you want to lead into the first one, and then I'll pick it up from there.
If you want to come on up and introduce Chelsea Blake. Read over what happened.
No better way to recognize Chelsea for her actions than to read a letter from the wife of the patient. Hey.
Jim?
Yes.
Would you mind doing that on mic so that we can back it up in video? We'd like to share this.
This letter is from Mrs. Jenkins. On Monday afternoon, August 19th, 2019, my husband suffered a deadly heart attack in our home in Wake, Virginia, Middlesex County. Our adult son and I attempted CPR as we waited rescue squad to arrive. Officer Chelsea Blake was off duty and heard the 9/11 call and arrived at our home almost immediately. She took over CPR and worked vigorously and steadily trying to get a response from my husband. She quickly made the decision to use the AED that she carried in her cruiser. Her professionalism and accurate assessment of the situation saved my husband's life, according to the two ER doctors at Riverside Walter Reed. We're truly grateful for her and her willingness to step in. We wish her the best of everything in what should be a long and impressive career in protecting and serving her fellow citizens. And we have a plaque to give you to that extent.
If you'd like to come over here under the seal, because we usually make photo ops after this. We've got one over here.
My dad, that was a letter that Ms. Jenkins wrote to the Sentinel. It was published a week or so ago.
Yeah. It came to us all, sort of put in her record, and we enjoy getting those letters and just, you know, to remind people that when we are off duty, we're on duty. So we do respond, and I'm very proud of all the deputies. We don't want to leave out the rescue squad because they did get there, but a lot of times we get there before some folks and we have to jump in, and it's been well appreciated.
Working together.
We work together. All right. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So I'm here now about a proposal for the sheriff's office to assume the responsibilities of animal control. Last May, Ricky had a medical injury and prohibited him from doing his duties. We, the county, then asked Lancaster to step in, and Lancaster County stepped in, but they would only do the emergency calls. We stepped in to help the county out. We're limited on so much what we can do. Law says we can do it, but attorneys like get into it and say, you gotta be trained, otherwise if the dog bites one of your deputies, you're gonna be in trouble. So we stepped in, we've been helping the county and helping Ricky. He's still on limited type duty right now. Are you back?
Well, I'm back, but I'm still limited.
Yeah, he's still limited. So we got together, I think it was about five or six weeks ago, Mr. Walker, Mr. Holt, Betty, and we sat down to see what gave, you know, put a proposal together to see if the sheriff's office can assist in just the law enforcement side. We're not proposing to take over a shelter. We don't want to do anything with the shelter. The shelter runs great. It's a good shelter, it's a good system. This would be picking up the animals, investigating the calls, and, and moving on and assuming that type of duty. If we did this, we would assure that there'd be all property, all the deputies would be properly trained. The certification for to get the animal control is two weeks of schooling. We do have a lot of deputies, a lot of us are animal lovers, and there's full support there with the office. We would also have to develop a policy procedure as it relates to the law enforcement training of the sworn personnel and to assure equal and fair treatment of animals and to the animal owners without a bias or any type of influence. The sheriff's office, we could be really equipped if we do this because we would take over the two vehicles and we transfer them into law enforcement vehicles, and we could handle the calls. Right now, we receive about, our 911 center receives about 1,000 calls a year for animal Continuing to do this, we would, a lot of times when they call in, they call in, we refer them to your office. And then the dispatch sends it to your office, to the county. County gets it out, we get it out to Ricky, and then if there's any complaints, further complaints, they continue to go to the county office. If we do this, this would stay with the sheriff's office. It wouldn't even come over here. So there would, it would free up more room over here at the county side. We would still have to develop a constructive and proactive relationship with the shelter. We're willing to do that. We'd have to review your protocol that you guys are using right now and the shelter's using for medical assistance. Say if an animal is severely injured after hours, what is the vet services? Because I understand talking to some of the people at the shelter, they, they step in at a certain point and they do referral for animals that are injured. And we would have to work with the shelter on that. Also, if there's no room at the shelter, like there was, I think, a couple of weeks ago, we started fostering some of the dogs. So the sheriff's office started a program where we went over, the shelter has given us some dogs that we can handle at the office, and we actually have our third dog now, we're getting ready to place. Hopefully, we'll get that dog placed, and it's been working really good with the office. The dogs that we have usually sit with the dispatchers, which is good for the dispatchers because a lot of times at night, they're by themselves in there and they enjoy the company. But they gotta be good dogs, because if they eat our wires, we're in trouble. So we, so far, we've been, we've been really, we've been excited, and I think Casey has some numbers. We actually went out on Facebook and promoted the shelter and promoted what we were doing. And he has some outstanding numbers, which you would not believe that are here. If you want to step up and give him some numbers, what has happened on our Facebook. Now, this has only been, what, about three weeks, a month?
So since August 1st, we received our first dog that we tried to adopt from the shelter. And since that, we have had 11 posts on our Facebook, and of those 11 posts, they've reached 59,875 people, and of those 59,000, 16,272 people have engaged with the post, whether they've liked, shared, commented, and, and pretty much all three dogs have been adopted. So we're gonna continue assisting the shelter, and we're also getting a lot of feedback on how can people donate to the shelter? How can they provide? They want the shelter to set up some Amazon accounts that they can just go and put money in that account and have dog food and such sent to the shelter. So we're gonna work on that as well.
We've actually had people drop off supplies that we brought over to the shelter. We've actually had people drop off checks to the shelter. And so this could be a proactive thing between the shelter and the sheriff's office if we move forward. Now we get into the cost of it. So if we do go forward with this, we would have to request two additional deputies, and that would be, they're $35,681 each for the deputies. We'd also have to go ahead and we would train, cross-train each of our road deputies now so that we would never have a shortage. Right now, there is no part-time people at the county level to help Ricky. So this would ensure that you always had someone on duty, there'd always be a vehicle out there that could answer the calls, even in the middle of the night. We have enough deputies that would do it. Eventually, we'd want to go in and train the school, train the school resource officers into it, and there would be some additional costs there that you see in your package. And like I said, the dispatch center would then take over and would stay with the sheriff's office. The training, we actually have Deputy Hertz who's here, and he's with another county. He's done this in his county that he's working at. He's been coming over and helping us with the policy procedures on how to handle this, how to take care of and be proactive with shelters. Almost every sheriff I talked to when we started into this said, stay away from the shelter, let the shelters run themselves, because they're 501(c) and they do a good job. And we're not interested in doing that part of it. We're interested in the law enforcement side of it and the community, the county side of revenues for that. So with that being said, in your package, you have that information. If you have any questions about it, you can go ahead and contact us. If you want to talk to Deputy Hertz, he's available. He will make himself available to each, each one of you and, and tell you about the county that he's at. I don't want to mention the county he's at because he's doing this on his own. He's helping us on his own. So we would be more delighted to assist you and assist in taking that over if you do wish that, and we think we can make it work. And Ricky would still be, I believe, still county-employed in the program, and that's it. If there's any questions, I'm here. I have plenty of people here that are willing to answer any of the questions if you have.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of questions. First of all, Sheriff, thank you very much for the detailed briefing, and I know Major Sampson and your other officers put together a lot of information, and that's really, really helpful. And forgive me if you went over this and I missed it, but the dispatcher, the cause for the dispatcher, right, aren't the dispatchers right now handling all the calls, or is that...
They're only handling the dispatch calls, so there's gonna be additional calls, like referrals, and they have to continue to get more calls because, so what they do is they take the call right now. They give it to Ricky.
Right now, if someone has an issue, an animal control issue, it goes to the dispatcher, is that right?
Right. Some lot of, some of the folks actually call the county when the county's open.
Okay.
And so they'll call the county and either talk to Betty, and then they'll get transferred over to us to dispatch Ricky. What's gonna happen if we take over... What's gonna happen if we take over, we're taking that whole thing. We're gonna take everything out of those calls from the county plus the referral calls after that. So, there's gonna be more follow-up calls coming in. Right now, we don't get those because it all goes to the county.
What, what is a referral call?
Follow-up calls. So, what happens if someone calls and complains about an animal?
Right.
We go over to there and they, they meet with Ricky right now and say, "He does, there's a problem with that animal." Say, someone's saying it's in the heat and it's too hot. And Ricky goes over there, makes sure the dog has water, everything it needs. And then he will leave his information. And then they follow up with him later. They'll call him back numerous times. He'll get called, 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 called. And those calls will start coming into the sheriff's office. Right now, they don't come to us.
Oh, I see. The follow-up after.
Yes, ma'am.
Or if there's a case. Okay.
So, our call, our call, we know our calls will go up even more than the thousand.
And all of those would have to go through the dispatcher?
Everything would, yeah. We'd take it. The county wouldn't have to have the number. The only number that we'd be giving out is the shelter's number, which we have right now. I think it's Ruth's number. And, and that's into adoption right now, we're doing. So, we would have that number. We would give out and our number. And then the calls would stop coming over to the county side.
Sheriff Bushy, what is the number that you gave for the cost of this program?
The cost of the program, we were, we're asking for two deputies, okay? Which is, a starting salary for deputies, $35,000 each deputy.
So, we're talking about...
Seventy something, yeah.
Pretty close to 100 a year.
Yeah, by the time you get in all the training and everything, it would be...
Is it close to around 100?
95,596.
And I don't know what's in his budget right now, what's in the animal control budget. It would be coming off of that also. So, there would, you would have an increase, yes. But you're gonna have 24 hours of service, which you don't have now. You always have someone trained. You won't have to worry about hiring all the time because you always have a problem right now with your hiring or your part-time. You're having a hard time getting part-time people right now to help him.
And Ricky, are you still gonna continue?
As animal control?
Yeah.
Not as animal control, not be at the shelter.
It'd be sheltering.
Okay.
So, under the, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Under this, what about vehicle costs? Because there's...
We would assume the two vehicles.
We have a vehicle for the animal control officer. Do, in addition to the officer...
What we would do is, we would take the two vehicles that you have right now, the county has.
Okay.
We have in our budget, we have to take off of the markings and put sheriff's office on that.
Okay.
Because now, the person is doing two types of roles. So, you're gonna have a law enforcement officer duly sworn also as an animal control officer. So, you're getting two of them.
Right.
So, we, we still would use your vehicles. And so, like right now, we're not using them. And right now, we're putting dogs in the back of our patrol cars.
Right.
So, and some of the patrol cars, we can't because of how they're built. So, and that's only the dogs that are willing to go with us. So, we still need the other ones that are not willing to go with us.
Yeah.
It's like, we have a dog right now that we're trying to place in a shelter and she loves to go for rides and we let her go with the deputies for rides, but she doesn't like my car because I have leather seats. She can't dig in when I turn corners. I'm gonna have to eventually get a cover, but...
Okay, so, we have the vehicles.
We have the vehicles already. We would just transfer them.
They're transferred under the sheriff's budget.
They're still in the county. We always, all of our vehicles are under the county of Middlesex. But we would change the markings, that's all we would do.
Okay. Now, the, the two deputies, now, I, I understand the work, the volume and, believe me, in the, in the big picture, I think, I appreciate the willingness to take on the training. I like the idea of all the sheriff deputies being trained to handle animal calls, I mean, the whole picture. But it, like with a lot of things, it comes down to the cost and what we can afford.
It comes down to the cost, yes.
Thanks, Lynn.
So, on the two positions, those deputies you envision, they wouldn't, you wouldn't have one deputy just doing animal calls?
No, they would be doing both roles.
Right.
So, in a lot of counties, when they do this, and for example, Hanover, when they had to do this, I think it was five, six deputies they had to hire? Because they're much bigger?
Mm-hmm.
And they had to buy more cars. And the sheriff said, "It's gonna cost you to do this. We're very," I'm very conservative, so our numbers are real low compared to what other sheriff's offices have done when they have taken this over. But what you're gonna get, the citizens will get a benefit, is you're also putting two more deputies on the road. So, you're having two more deputies on the road doing law enforcement and answering animal calls. Then, if we train the other deputies, that if these two are out, we have someone to fill that slot right away.
Right.
So, because you got your vacation time right now, Ricky, he told me he doesn't get much time at all. He's always on call, 24/7. And so...
So, the idea is with two additional deputies, you would have 24 hours of coverage with at least one trained officer, if not eventually all, more.
Well, all the other deputies will be trained, yes.
All right. Because that's what, it's, it's a lot of money. And it is the middle of the budget year and this, this is not gonna be easy.
Well, we're not proposing to do it right now. We're, I think Matt was talking about, if we do this, we go forward January 1. The, the cost for the additional deputies training and that, that we have in the proposal, we would wait till next budget year. So, we would slowly work into this. We don't want to jump into this all at once.
Oh, okay.
But what we'd like to do is at least start with hiring two people. Deputy Hertz would be more than happy. He's an instructor. He instructs for the state.
Right.
So, he could train.
Right.
He's willing to do that for us. And he's willing to help us put that policy procedures together. What I find, go ahead.
But, so you still, though, you're talking about $100,000 being committed in January?
Well, actually, what, what I was gonna say when, when the sheriff was finished with his presentation, what we're here today for is to gain, to gauge the board's receptiveness to whether or not you want to pursue this. And if you do, Betty and I are gonna work through some logistics. It, it would be my recommendation that if we do decide to move forward and we work through the logistics, then we come back to the board in October with a final number that it will cost us to make the conversion for the six-month period between January 1 and June 30th, which is the remainder of the FY '20 fiscal year. And then, of course, once we make that conversion, we'll have a full budget year for 2021 to review during the budget process. Betty and I have to work through some logistics issues. There are some monies that are currently in the shelter budget that may be able to be reassigned. We'll have a better idea of what the final cost would be for the board at the October meeting. This is basically just to gauge your reaction to the proposal and to see if it's an, if it's an avenue the board may want to go.
If I may offer my reaction for the gauge?
Sure.
First of all, I, I think it's spectacular, Sheriff, that you see a problem in the community and your department immediately does what Chelsea basically did and says, "I'm off duty, but I'll make this my problem." So, I'm appreciative of that and, and we need more of that. Secondly, what I want to say is, you know, I, I think the opportunities to share efficiencies by breaking that department down and putting it under you are gonna be hard to break down into numbers in, in a way that's easily sold.
Right.
It's, it's $95,000 eventually, over time, no matter how we cage that. But when I look at the expenses just from this month and, and what was spent, it's about 30, it, it would be over the course of a year, the equivalent of about 31,000 animal control spends if they maintain their burn rate of $2,600 a month, which is what they just spent. The line items that they spent were compensation. We, we've already talked about that. We're shifting that compensation and maybe increasing it. But there are sub-benefits in that we have additional officers on the street who have multiple training. They can do different things. They can be responsive. Not to dwell on the Chelsea story, but it's compelling. Like, like you said, you're always on, right? Having more people in the community like that is, is what I would go to my constituents and make the sale on. Even though I'm probably gonna have to say, we're spending more constituent money. I, I just, I'm looking at the $2,600 that we spend in animal control and I don't think there's gonna be a lot of opportunities to say, "Well, yes, we're asking for $96,000, but some of that is deleted from, from the old animal control budget." Just looking at them, it's compensation, repairs to a dog bed, telephone cost, maybe there's some synergies there to the tune of $2,000 a year. Feed, we're still gonna have to buy that. Medical and lab supplies, vehicle maintenance and support, uniforms, other operating supplies. That was just a snapshot of last month's animal control expenses. So, I, I think, for me, as I go to sell this to my constituents, because I am supportive, it's gonna be, it's going to cost more.
It is gonna cost you more. If we, we're not...
And I'm not saying you're sugarcoating. And I'm just saying, I'm thinking through how...
We know it's gonna cost more and it's, are you gonna continue? You, you've got Ricky right now. We don't know if he's gonna come back full-time. You're, you're having a hard time even finding people to come in to do it part-time. And so, we're doing it already for you. We stepped up and we, we're doing that for you.
And respect...
And we've been waiting to find out what you want to do. We will still continue to help you do this, but this was just a proposal to say, "Do you want to switch over and do this?" Because a lot of counties are doing this right now.
And in respect of everybody's time, I'll just say one other thing. I think what you said about Facebook is exemplary of the positive impact this can have on the image of police officers. In our country today, there are a lot of people who have negative views of police officers. It's harder to do that in small communities like ours because we know our police officers intimately. But anything we can do for the young people around here to not have any of those ill-conceived sort of theories about what a cop is, this contributes to that positive. I mean, just seeing you, I mean, Officer Hertz is like three times my size and he's talking about dogs passionately. You know, that's what we need our young people to see. And I, and I really see this as an opportunity to just continue doing what you're already doing with your, with your social media presence and, and sort of letting people know what our officers of Middlesex County do. So, I'll be quiet now, but I'm supportive.
Yeah. And we know we can offset some of the budget costs for the shelter because we know, we will help the shelter promote. When they go out and do their fun drives, we will be there with them.
Yep.
We're willing to do that. Because, I mean, face it, a lot of us in the country are animal lovers. I mean, we do love our animals. And so, we're willing to do it, but we know the cost because you're training law enforcement slash animal control. It's gonna cost extra.
I feel like that, that'll be, it'll be a good idea because you think about it, you know, they're playing two roles. And when you have two roles and you have more deputies on the road and around that are available, then it'd be good for the whole.
But like, like Matt said, I think we should wait and see what his, he and Betty come up with the crunch and then see what the final numbers are and where we can go.
And find what the final numbers are.
Yes. And we're still gonna be here. This was just a proposal to bring to you.
And I think, I think we're definitely asking you to get those numbers for us.
That's fine. And I just wanted to add, for Betty and, and my part, we, we had met with Ricky and we think we can work through the logistics. I think it's a very well put-together plan and proposal. Like the sheriff said, we've been talking for five, six weeks about potential, you know, adjustments. And, you know, hat tip to the sheriff and Mickey Sampson and anyone, Casey?
Casey.
For putting together this proposal for the board. If this is an avenue the board would like to pursue, Betty and I will work through the logistics and we'll have hardened fast, well, not hardened fast, we'll have hardened numbers in October and a proposal put for y'all to, put to a vote. It is, it would be my recommendation to start this effective July, excuse me, January 1. That would give the sheriff some time to adjust, train, give us some time to make the necessary logistical adjustments that we need and get things in place. But just to be clear, the county would still be in operation of the shelter. We, we have a number of our pet friends with us today.
Yep.
There they are. We couldn't, we couldn't do that without them. They are a great asset to this community and we would still be engaged in that endeavor. The sheriff would be taking over the enforcement side of things. But I do think it's a good proposal and I would recommend we pursue it.
Are you in support?
I agree.
I think you've got four that are supportive and I can't imagine Chip would.
And I spoke to Chip earlier. He's supportive as well.
There you go.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I would add, Sheriff Bushy and I were on the phone earlier about the hurricane and, you know, sometimes we lose sight of a, a couple of facts. And one of them is, you know, we're counting about 10,000 to 11,000 people in January. But in the summertime, we could be 20,000 to 25,000. So, I think both of us see this as an opportunity to augment his force because, you know, we can't get the state to agree with us to give us the deputies we need in the summertime. So, I do think it's a great opportunity to get them where they need to be and augment the force. And it's a win-win to me.
Mr. Chair, I believe we're behind schedule?
We are a little bit behind schedule, yeah. Treasurer report is next, but I don't see Betty here.
She had planned on being here today, but her husband had a medical emergency that she had to take him back to Richard.
Sure.
She was unable to come.
But we do have the report.
I believe you do have the report.
Pages 48 through 57.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd like to ask staff to communicate with the treasurer when she's in a better position. What I'd like to see, just speaking for myself as an executive summary, not the printout, and the last three pages of the printout, she's scratched across the numbers that matter inaccurate. And on page 54, one of the statistics shows that the collections for that particular line item are at 241%. So, it, it needs scrubbed, is, is what I'm saying. And I'm, I'm asking the administration to go to the treasurer and, and refine this a little bit into an executive summary that's legible and accurate so that we can actually use it for the intended purpose.
Okay, pretty much the same with Commissioner Revenue Bonnie. Is she here today? I don't, I didn't see her either.
Mr. Chair, if I may again ask the administration, I don't believe a report was submitted. And I'll go on the record as saying that's frustrating to me. We've made it very clear that we want to get to the bottom of our taxation. And I'd like for it to be communicated that we expect a report. We've asked for it numerous times. And I would encourage the citizens, our constitutional officers are up for election. This is very important stuff. If you really want your taxes to get collected correctly, be thinking about who's gonna fill that chair next.
She's very sick.
Understood. And I guess, and I know this isn't supposed to be a dialogue, Bonnie's a friend of mine. We go to Rotary together. But my job is to make sure that the taxes get collected so that we don't have to raise them unnecessarily. And I catch a lot of heat for some of the decisions that I make and some of the thoughts that I have about what's appropriate for the community. So, this is my job.
And there is that. At this moment, Bonnie is asking for part-time, I think two people, part-time for the elections, which we obviously need to discuss. But, moving quickly on, V-Dog, we do have someone here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Board Member Vice Chair. Staff and the general public would like to say Joyce will be returning. We just don't seem to know when. Hopefully, by the end of that month. And, you know, I've been, I've been very lucky to have Mr. David Beal come down from the district to give us a hand since she's been gone. I think David came here before you last time. I was down in Florida at the time. And it's, it certainly has been nice having him around. And he's not sure, because of Joyce's status, exactly when he might be able to get back up to Fredericksburg where he normally works. We're glad to have him. With that said, I, I heard, we talked a little bit about storm prep earlier on. And of course, we've been pretty much consumed with that most of the day, trying to make our, our preparations as well and the kinds of things that we have to do and engage. So, we are preparing as if it's certainly gonna happen and although we hope not. Most of the time, when we get up in front of folks at our own meetings, one of the first things we do is have a safety message because, as you folks know, we do an awful lot of work out there on the road. And boy, can that be a dangerous place. You know, let them work, let them live. You know, let 'em work, let 'em live. We want our employees to go home alive and eat supper with their, with their families. But, you know, with that said, I thought I would mention one thing that I think is very timely, and that is school buses. And stopping for school buses out there on the road. It's worth communicating, it's worth talking about a little bit, I think. Even maybe around your supper table at night, or with your friends, you know, it's that time of year again. And with, with the seemingly higher occurrence of distracted driving, you know, these, these kinds of issues can have horrific consequences. And so, please, you know, talk it up around the house, all the constituents. Please be very aware of the school buses that started running today. And give them some room. Certainly see them and observe the rules that are there concerning school buses. I also mentioned every once in a while, you'll see something in our traffic section about a school bus stop ahead sign. School bus stop ahead signs, they don't denote where the stop is. They are a warning sign where, at the rate of speed of the road, to give the average driver enough time to see a bus in order to stop. When the sight distance is not available, our traffic people come out and review these kind of things. And we will end up, if it warrants, posting a sign which would be equal to the distance where somebody would need to see a stopped school bus. And we also coordinate that with Ms. Billy Eubanks at a school transportation. And most of these requests for school bus stop ahead, we will run through your school transportation folks first. With that said, I'll hurry up for the rest. Canoe House Road, yes, at long last, we're actually working on Canoe House Road. And the guys are trying their best to, most of the stone, the shaping's down. They're actually trying to start shooting it this week, and we're hoping to complete that before Dorian gets here. I thought I'd mention just a couple of other things. We, we had questions on the potential for rumble strips on Town Bridge. Been able to complete a review of that. And what the review showed, which I thought was good, was that there've only been like six accidents in the last five years on Town Bridge. They've all been roadway departures, off-road, roadway departure-type accidents. And with that kind of stats and that kind of situation, our traffic people advise us that rumble strips generally really wouldn't be warranted with, with that kind of a situation than what we've been seeing happening on Town Bridge. And we'll say that the rumble strips are initiative that the state has. And right now, we're concentrating on primary roads as far as rumble strips, either centerline rumble strips or edgeline rumble strips, which with off-road departure kinds of things, would likely be more appropriate than the centerline.
A quick question.
Sure.
So that's based on accident, not based on traffic with all the RVs pulling around the curbs and coming in there? That's what you're saying? It's not, it's not like a traffic count? Traffic, how much going on?
These are, these are basically safety measures. They're a little bit different than warning signs and those sorts of things. But they are safety devices that are utilized to meet specific needs. And there was no evidence of people crossing the centerline, causing accidents over the five-year period that was looked at, that they were. Roadway departures are running off the road and striking fixed optics off the road. But I did want to let you know that did look at it, and our traffic people look at it. And, you know, funding is always gonna be an issue. How do you get there? But through our traffic folks, it would not be something that would normally qualify for any of the programs that we have. Also wanted to comment quickly. Coach Point Road, we're doing a little speed study. At the end of Coach Point, it's down towards the water, and it looks like a subdivision back in there. They are private roads, but we're having that reviewed. Timberneck Road, 636, I think I mentioned it maybe previously, but we did receive the speed study back, the official speed study back today, which has to be official before we can say too much about it. And Timberneck will be posted at 25 miles an hour where it narrows down. And the two roads inside there, I think it's 689 and 659, they're currently unposted. They'll also be posted at 25. And there'll be a no outlet sign posted right there where the surface of Timberneck does from the wide paved section to the narrow. And lastly, stoplight issues. My favorite, stoplight right here. No, it's not. They think they've got it fixed. We've had, I think we had some issues last week, during the middle of the week, and they were able to correct the problem Friday. And I think the traffic folks are probably looking to go back and install, or reconnect the loops that are under their pavement to the traffic control system. Right now, it's camera-operated, high-tech, very susceptible to lightning strikes and those kinds of things. And I think the last I heard, that they're gonna be moving towards reconnecting those loops, which we did put back in when the road was paved, and have the traffic loops be the controller. And with that, Mr. Vice Chairman, I'm pretty much done. I would be happy to try to entertain any questions you might have.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. The responsibility, I think is the question. The trees that are in the median of Route 33, about, about a mile east of here, there's two or three that are dead, and there's one that's fallen over. Who's, who's responsibility? What do we need to do to get those taken care of?
Probably something we can put on our, our list. I can't tell you it's a super priority of our life, but...
Yeah.
There is, there is one that's completely dead and turned over.
Yeah, there's a couple of them.
And we did participate to some extent with some of the smaller myrtles that were planted on, in the Delta build that are just now getting about this size. So we're trying not to mow them over.
Oh, the crepe myrtle thing?
I can't say, I can't say that we have a, you know, a landscape-type culture as far as trimming to maintain them, but...
I'm talking, these are like, I think they're maple trees, or they're taller, not the crepe myrtles. Yeah. Well, it seems like they're gonna be in the way of the mowing anyway.
Bradford pears.
Oh, is that where they're?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, there's like two dead and one dead on the ground.
Bradford pears were the rage.
Yeah.
And in some places still are, but...
But if it's, if we just get it on the list someplace when there's time. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'd just like to add, thanks for all the work that we saw this summer.
Yeah.
Twix Ferry looks wonderful. It's smooth. It's, I mean, there's so much that goes on behind your department, and we're appreciative. One other thing I noticed on the way in today, at Few Acres Road and the Pooleer Highway, the sign has been knocked down. It's Route 1130, and it's the 1130 sign.
The route shield.
Yeah.
Thank you. And again, the last reminder, 1-800-for-road. And I appreciate your comments.
Sorry, I didn't get a chance to welcome you.
Welcome back.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, before we move on to the schools, I'll just give y'all a little bit of an update on the conference call that David and I just finished up. A state of emergency was declared by the governor yesterday, which enables certain resources to be mobilized in preparation or anticipation of a bad event, which is, which is what he did yesterday. The, there has been no decision made on a mandatory evacuation as of this point. Chances are that decision will get made in the morning. But the forecast track continues to pull that storm away from us. And the hope is that we won't have to deal with a mandatory evacuation, because a little bit of Middlesex is in that, that flood zone A, and I happen to be in that myself. It, not to leave it up to local choice, but just for the, for Richmond to say all of this has to be evacuated doesn't, sort of ties our hands as to how to, how to best look out after our citizens. And I did have a chance to, in the question and answer part of the call, make that statement, because I really don't think one size fits all. And the mayor of Chinkatig was on with the same sort of thing. They're lumping Chinkatig in with everything south of Windmill Point, and it, anyway. The storm track looks favorable for us. The state of emergency remains in place, and there are no mandatory evacuation plans as of yet. Stay tuned at 8:00 AM. All righty, moving on to school matters. Dr. Peter Gratz, come on up, Dr. Pete.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Walker, Ms. Muncie, and attendees. Bring you greetings from the schools, day one today. Buses are on the road, so I won't say it's in the books yet, but I think it will be very soon. Very successful first day. So I have three appropriation requests, supplemental appropriations, and one budget transfer request. Mr. Chair, at your discretion, I can go through all of these together, or we can take them individually. I'll leave that to you to advise.
In my experience, we haven't turned you down yet. We have listened to you and let you convince us to do that. So I'm just as happy to lump them all together.
Okay.
If that's, if that's all right with the rest of the board.
We'll do that. So the first one, I think I had these in the same order as your packet. But the first is an appropriation request to carry over funds for food service, or, excuse me, from textbooks.
Textbooks.
Textbook funds?
Yes.
So to carry over textbook funds from one fiscal year to the next. We receive these from the state. The state, this is part of our calculation tool that the state provides. They tell us how much we get. They tell us how much our match is. We don't spend it every year. We do always spend our textbook funds. Textbook funds, as you know, traditionally supported adoption of textbooks. We don't always use traditional textbooks. But we've been, in the last few years, given the flexibility to use these textbook funds to support classroom instruction in more flexible ways, such as supporting mobile devices and iPads, things like that. So all of this will be spent this year, but I did want to provide that brief explanation. Typically, it's not $102,000, although every few years it is. So, that is textbook funds. The next one is appropriating unspent funds in food service from one fiscal year to the next. $35,000 is a dangerously low carryover for us. We usually try to keep that in the 60 to 70, even up to $100,000. We won't get our federal reimbursements until later on in the fall, and we do have to meet payroll quickly. So we, we try to maintain a little more than that. We never know year to year, obviously, how many kids are gonna purchase lunches, how many kids are gonna qualify for free and reduce reimbursement rates. But in any case, that's what this is, the $35,000. It's essentially what wasn't spent on food and supplies for the last fiscal year, to be carried over to be used in this fiscal year.
Dr. Pete, you said you'd like to usually have a figure of like twice that size. So that's just because this has been overutilized, or utilized at a higher rate?
No, it's really because fewer students are participating.
Okay.
Fewer students are purchasing lunches.
Add it backwards. Okay.
Pack theirs and purchase. Okay, the next and final appropriation, or supplemental appropriation, is carrying over funds. We are the fiscal agent for our Chesapeake Bay Governor's School. We really have nothing to do with that budget as far as the implementation, other than we do have a board representative who serves on a regional board of all those participating school divisions. But we're the fiscal agent, and so we technically carry these funds on their behalf. They spend them, they implement them, they budget them. That's what this is. This is unspent funds by the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School to be carried over for them. Middlesex County Public Schools doesn't use any of this money. And then finally, budget transfer request. What we'd like to do is to take the $50,000 in operations, and this is a line that we've used to, to house, for example, if, if a person is replaced, somebody who's senior level is replaced by somebody who's less senior, and the salary is different, those kinds of differences go into this line. And so, what we'd like to do is to take these amounts and repurpose them to the food service, which I indicated earlier, is running, it is self-sustaining, but it is running dangerously low for us. And so, we wanted to bolster that a little bit with these funds. In addition, we do have, all last year, our manager, Margot Bridge, did take on managing one of our cafeterias. We weren't able to find a manager for that cafeteria. And so, this year, we do have a manager. We have somebody shadowing her. She's already announced her retirement at the end of this year. So those are two expenses that we'd like to account for here as well. And the portions at the bottom are just giving further detail about how those revenues and expenses are matching. I'm happy to go through them, or just...
Mr. Chair, would you entertain a motion?
Yes, sir, I will.
I'd like to move that we approve budget supplement requests FY 2028, '09, and '10, as well as budget transfer request FY 2020 '02.
Have a motion. This is our second.
Second.
Motion duly accepted. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Slow order.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Gratz?
Yes, sir. Hal Mueller made what I thought was a good suggestion that we look at the expense of continuing to service our own buses versus contracting. And I think that is, generally speaking, a good idea to get some idea. Could you get us those numbers?
I think, certainly I could get some. I would need further clarification and parameters on what I'm comparing. If we're outsourcing the cost of, say, diesel mechanics or traditional mechanics to a certain vendor, I'd have to know who those vendors are, and to have some kind of a scope of services that they could give me a price for. If we're just looking at individual, you know, the cost of this kind of a repair to go to a local mechanic versus us doing it, I could try to get my hands on some figures that other school divisions who may be outsourcing, I don't know of any, but there may be some who are outsourcing this, and try to get a feel for what that costs. In short, certainly, if there's a figure out there, I'll get it. I don't think with just the public comment, I know exactly what I would be searching for.
Yeah.
Have to go a little deeper.
This is purely contracting versus in-house.
Sure.
And I think it's worth mentioning, it might be helpful to give the public a little more exposure to just all that goes on within the school bus garage. It is a major expense.
Sure.
But, I mean, I know for a fact that all, all of our buses go through a service every summer that is not sitting idle.
Yes.
That is a major repair time, because they're not out five days a week.
Sure.
Doing their thing. And then they're serviced throughout the year monthly. So what happens in that school bus garage, from my understanding, is pretty significant. But if I was just Joe Q. Public and didn't have access to Greg Harrow the way I do, I probably wouldn't get that answer as quickly. So I think maybe the more efficient first step is just some public education in terms of, this is why small communities, and you can look around at other communities, they all have school bus garages. This is in part why they choose to do that. The other part is, and even Hal, I think in your cursory study of, you know, what services exist out there, I think if we were Hanover, or Richmond, or in Reiko, maybe we'd be big enough to attract some of those kinds of contract services. But the reality is, we're far away from lots of profit centers, and we're very small. And a lot of times, we don't have the same options in contracting, and we have to do our own. But I think, for me, the response to the constituents here is, well, here's what's going on in our school bus garage. And while it is a major expense, we're trying to, we're trying to be as efficient about how we manage our bus fleet as possible. And I can tell you, as well, as you know, I'm working with Dominion, and have a conference call tomorrow to talk about a transition to electric buses, which are lower in operation and maintenance expenses, and they're cleaner, and, you know, better for our children. And Dominion's interested in helping fund that. So we're looking at creative options, you know, Dr. Pete and I, real time, about school buses and the garage. But I'm kinda guessing that Pete is probably done talking about that school bus garage soon, but we need to let the constituents... Well, we do need to let the constituents know why we're pursuing it, and make sure that we're covering all our bases.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pete.
Thank you.
Moving on to social services, we've got a report only, pages 65 through 67 in your packet. Item D, it looks like...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, can I ask the board for a five-minute recess? We have a battery that's directly under Edder that sounds like it might explode at any moment.
Okay, sure.
That's the beeping you hear.
Please, yeah, we can fix it. We can fix it with this thing. Please take five, but don't take six. Camera back on. All right, well, Dave, don't sit down. Don't sit down. Got you for item D on HB 2322, septic pump outs. I like a very enlightening conversation we're about to have.
Oh, yes, it is, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon, everybody. I just want to bring the board up to date on this particular item. It's House Bill 2322. Would this, if, I think most of the board members are already aware of this, that the, right now, the requirement for septic pump out lies in the, with the locality in force. There's a, currently, code sections that require septic pump outs for septic facilities located in Chesapeake Bay areas. So what this House bill does is it's enabling the Virginia Department of Health to take over this program, which is a good thing for us. We had our first meeting at the PDC, I think about a month or so ago. It was basically a chat session between DEQ, local VDH officials and local staff. What they were, VDH was trying to get a feel for what, what do we have to do to take this program over? You know, what are we in for, so to speak? So I think they, it was a little eye-opening for them, and they might have some sympathies for the localities having to deal with it in the past. But basically, what it amounts to is, we're going to have to obviously cooperate with the Department of Health. They're going to have to have databases for property ownership to be able to send this notification out. So it may take some mapping, you know, they may need to know where the Chesapeake Bay areas are. So there's, we're obviously going to have some level of cooperation with the Department of Health in this process. So it is, it's in its infancy right now. I mean, it's just, you know, there's a lot of work to be done, but I just wanted to make the board aware that this process has started. Staff will be working with the different agencies to try to help facilitate that. So if the board, I don't know if the board has any questions on this particular matter or not.
This is actually a legislative win for Middlesex County, because we've been advocating for this policy change for at least 12 years.
Well, and we really haven't been enforcing it either, because we're not equipped to.
Exactly. Exactly. And none of the localities, we're not alone.
Any other questions or comments to be directed at? Mr. Grantz?
So the second item, I think you'll see, we just, Jody assembled this information for the purpose, so the board could see how our numbers are running. I think you'll notice that we're very, very close to where we were last year. I did want, no, one, we had, I think we had eight more new dwellings, which is encouraging. That's nice to see. Other than that, the zoning permits and most of the variances and subdivision approvals, they vary a little bit from year to year, but we seem to be staying pretty solid as to where we've been. I see through the whole process, everything's about the same as was prior year. The board have any questions on any of those numbers? I think they're fairly straightforward. This correlates more with the budget year, too, a little bit. Usually, I think you get a report at the first of the year. This is working more in line with the budget year, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Grantz for putting this together, and every month, we do get a report from Deitzel. And I just want to say, I know sometimes, whether it's this or the social services reports, sometimes it's through, we look and we got, but it really is good information. We do look at it every month, and this, this one in particular is a real indicator of how our economy is doing.
It is.
And, for example, we have tourist homes now. We have eight. There's probably more, so there should be revenue there for lodging tax, and it's information when, you know, site plans are approved or whatever. And I appreciate, too, that, as you note, that it's holding its own. That's also an indicator that we need to be conscious of, because I don't have an equivalent chart, but I know that Lancaster is higher this year in all of their permits.
Mm-hmm.
And our contractors in Middlesex know it, because that's where many of them are doing a lot of work.
Right.
And so we need, this is another indication of where we may be missing opportunities for, whether it's new home construction, or, you know, plans for new home construction, or renovations, or things like that. So it's really important information, and I appreciate you putting it together.
And that's what I picked out right away with the new home starts. That was encouraging. I liked seeing that. So that's, that was a nice bomb. That was fairly significant, so. Any other questions on that particular item?
And, Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Grantz moves on from this report, I have asked him to look at our rates and fees that we charge for building, planning, and zoning and environmental reviews, to make sure that we're not the highest, we're not the lowest, but we're in that comfortable middle with the counties around us. We hope to have that report to you by December, so when we start the budget process, if the board wants to make a move on rates and fees, we can.
Thank you, sir. David, do you have a mark on deck for the?
I think we have one more, I think one more item was in my part, and that was the-
YMCA.
YMCA stormwater agreement, and that's fairly straightforward. This is an agreement that has to be executed by the board or by the chairman as it's, as directed. This is standard language that's drafted. It just basically means that that huge BMP in the back of the Y is going to be maintained to operating efficiency and at DEQ's satisfaction. This is a little, some of these previous agreements were Middlesex agreements. In this case, it is DEQ, because they're the reviewing authority. They actually reviewed the stormwater in this package, so this needs to be executed by the board. It's been reviewed. DEQ's had a look at it, they're okay with it. The way their process calls for it, they want it executed by the board, then sent to them, and then they'll execute it and send it back. The Y may be, somebody's going to be responsible, recording it, most probably the YMCA, they would, they're the benefactor of it, so. So if, I guess the board might have to take action to direct the chairman to sign that.
Do we have a motion in that fact?
I will make that motion to have the chairman sign the stormwater maintenance agreement for this property. This, oh.
Second. Motion duly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none. So ordered. Now, this exercise is sort of what brought us to the discussion of possibly giving that property to the YMCA, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At some point in the future, exercises like this would fall to the then property owner, which would not necessarily be the county.
Okay.
And this, the Y is responsible for the maintenance of this facility as long as they have it. Obviously, the language in the agreement is for the successor, so they would assume all, you know, not only the property owner part, but the-
I'm just relating to the relatively soft costs of owning this property when somebody else has complete control over it, and that was, that was the thought behind, maybe.
Right.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, now I'll turn the, I think the next item is the inoperable vehicle.
Okay, and I'd just like to comment as we get into this, because there's a lot of strong feelings on both sides of this issue, and I want to make sure that everybody in attendance understands that your board of supervisors didn't just sit here one day and say, what can we do to stir people up? Let's do an inoperative vehicle. This is in response to citizen complaints, to situations that they think they shouldn't have to deal with, and that they want the county to come up with something to shield them from that situation. And all we're doing is being responsive to citizen complaints and trying to work through something and hopefully find a win-win all the way around. So I just wanted to preface where we were, because Heather's gone to a lot of work to put together a potential, I don't say potential, potential draft ordinance, which is very inclusive. What it's done is included everything that could be included, and then we can just strike things or work backwards from that. So I want to make sure that we shield Heather there. Heather's not trying to swing a big hammer at this thing. She's just showing us what all of the options would be. So with that.
With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Long as he speaks.
Thank you, David.
Yes, sir, and I may speak, I may come up and speak with its relationship to the zoning ordinance and the zoning districts, because there's a couple nuances there. I think the board should be aware of that, too.
Mr. Chair, if it would be okay with you, we skipped over an item on page 69. David Self's not here. It has to do with unsafe structure resolution update.
I'm sorry. We missed that.
Thank you.
And I don't think we have to talk long about this, but it is somewhat related to the inoperable vehicle.
Yeah.
Yes, that particular item has been resolved. I think you've seen that the structure's been removed. They sent, I believe there was a demo permit issued about a year ago, I believe, yeah, over a year ago, where it's a letter of complaint, and it took them a little while to execute the demolition permit and fix it, but evidently, that's all been resolved. You can see the building's been removed. There is a pile of brush there that's, you know, where they kind of cleaned the lot up a little bit, but the structure's been removed from that property.
Is this the one where the demolition permit found its way to the Commissioner of Revenue's office before the demolition was done?
Yes.
Okay. I would just, I would throw a caution, when a demolition permit is issued, that doesn't mean that the structure's gone. I think before it's taken off the tax rolls, that it needs to be shown that that work has been completed.
Right.
And I thought this was the one that that had, so, yeah. Was this the one that the tree grew through the roof?
Yeah.
There were multiple trees coming through the roof.
Yeah.
My only question is, the demolition looks wonderful, and the old abandoned unsafe structure is gone, but now there's a 20-foot debris pile that, is anybody coming back to address that, or do we just get an unsafe 20-foot debris pile?
I think the structure itself has been removed.
The structure's gone, but you have literally a 20-foot debris pile.
Yeah, they have a pile of scrub. I don't know where that would trigger anything in particular. That's a, that's a, we'd have to go after, I don't know that there is a violation for pile, I don't think it fits a junk definition. That's a tough, that's a tough call.
Yeah, no, I get it. It would be interesting to me to maybe review, if we go through this process as we did here on Twiggs Ferry, and they remove a building, are we asking them to remove a building or just reconstitute it into a slightly more dead structure?
That's a good point, yes.
Is the, is the pile of stuff debris from the building?
I believe the building debris's been removed. It looks like they, when they did, it looks like it's mostly brush.
Brush.
It's a brush pile, is what it looks like.
But it's a brush pile full of construction debris or building debris. It's unsightly to this citizen.
Yeah.
Will you look and see if there's something?
Yeah, this is, it was the satisfaction of the building official.
Okay.
So it satisfied his requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other items? At that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Long.
Come on up, Mark.
Good afternoon, board and staff. I'm here to discuss the inoperable vehicle ordinance, the draft that staff and legal has helped draw up. And we put it in your package, and what I'd like to start with is that we looked at several surrounding localities to see what kind of ordinance they had addressing inoperable vehicles. And what we've done is kind of compile something together that kind of runs down the middle, not too far extreme and not too low, kind of just took everything on average and compiled something together. And what I'd like to read is the first two sections we hear, whereas the board of supervisors from Middlesex County, Virginia, have declared that the existence of inoperable motor vehicles, trailers, and semi-trailsers on a property in Middlesex County are a fire hazard, any hindrance in fighting fires create unsanitary harbages for rodents and insects, constitutes an attractive nuisance to children, and possess other substantial health and safety hazards to Middlesex County citizens. And whereas the board of supervisors determine that the inoperable vehicles, excuse me, inoperable motor vehicles, trailers, and semi-trailsers on property in Middlesex County are detrimental to the welfare of Middlesex County citizens, as existence of such vehicles reduce property values, dissuades relocation of families and businesses to the area, and discourages tourism. And at that point, we have those in there, and really what we're looking for is some sort of guidance or suggestions from the board, how they feel on those two sections as they relate to the ordinance we've drafted up. And we'll move on to the definitions. If you look at the definitions sections, what we did was pull the definitions from the code. So they are basically word-for-word from the code. We didn't change anything in those. And what we also described in there was the section for screening. When it gave the option of actually screening a vehicle, we gave four options, and we clearly stated what we want to see, or what should be shown as the measuring wall, the hedge of dense evergreen vegetation, mainly so it'll be a year-long vegetation, and also, number three, the wooded fences. And number four was one that generally we added in there for a car cover, basically a manufactured cover for a car, not necessarily a car, but more or less for designed to be on a car, so they're not putting a clear cover or a car cover of car of some sort. And we added those in there, so it's basically shielding and screening, there was no deviation from the definition. It was just one, two, three, and four. These are the options that we're looking at to shield or screen a vehicle from view, and that is from the property, from the right of the road, what we're looking at. So if there's any questions on the definitions as they stand right now. So section two, I'll touch base on one of the sections, and Mr. Grantz will step in and do the other section. I will be on A, defining the sections for, it should be unlawful for any person, firm, or corporation to keep except within a fully enclosed building or structure, otherwise shielded or screened from view on any property, and these are the zone sections, DRC, CR, VC, CD, GB, WCLI, and MH pursuant to the Middlesex County ordinance. And what we've done here is we've left it blank. Basically, we'd like your input on the number, and we've given the number of zero to five, which is what the surrounding counties, they're anywhere, they range from that from zero to five for the inoperable vehicles on the property. This is, in his way, it's written as determining the vehicles that are not within a building that are screened, they're out actually in the open. So we're not addressing at this point in this section vehicles that are in a garage or in a fully enclosed building. Basically saying, the vehicle's sitting out in the open, this is the number we're looking at for a vehicle just sitting right there that's not in a building, shielded or screened from view. And these are in this district here, so, again, we haven't given a number. We're basically asking the board how they feel on a number in this location.
So if they're screened by any one of those four methods that we talked about here a few minutes ago, we're not talking about them here.
Yes, yes.
That's a separate deal, okay? So screening can be a very, very, very large portion of solving this issue.
Yeah, this is determining the issue.
Screening comes completely out of this-
Good.
-potential being considered in violation. If you're screened, you're fine.
Mr. Chairman, just wrote, it may be beneficial for the board to understand, the surrounding jurisdictions allow zero to five. Is there an average?
Zero.
Average is zero?
The majority do not. This is, I'm sorry, Mark, if I can jump in. This is a little bit different. We are saying that you can have, I give the example, you can have your car, your inoperable vehicle sitting in the front yard with flower pots growing in it. That's the way I've written this, based on what the board, I tried to start real broad so you can narrow it in. So this allows you to have as many or none inoperable vehicles outside of screening, shielding, or a garage. The average is zero. The exception is in the more rural areas such as LDR, where you don't have such a cluster development. Then the jurisdictions, there's some discretion, but the majority around us say you cannot have visible inoperable vehicles. Like King and Queen says that, for example.
With all due respect, if the range is zero to five, it suggests there's a five somewhere, meaning that the average has to be greater than zero.
It was very difficult to draft this for you without initial guidance, so, Mr. Grantz, I'm just trying to give you as broad as I can. I didn't want to give you the misconception, so I-
Okay, but you surveyed how many counties roughly?
At least six.
Six or so, and?
It's not the average, it's the mode.
It's the mode, so I guess that was a better way we should put it, but I guess I was just trying to give you, I gave you no direction, I just was trying to give you a broad scope here.
You were given a difficult task, and I wasn't trying to pick on you, I just, what I'm, what I'm saying is, I understand it, and I think it's, it's good that you show us what the others have done, but we want to understand, are we standing out if we say zero? Are we standing out if we say five? I've got what I need, thank you.
I'm not sure I understand the use of the word average in there.
I think it's mode.
It's the mode. Of the six counties that were surveyed, they're all basically saying-
Oh, and the average of zero.
Yeah, more counties allow zero. There's evidently one county maybe that allows five.
No, I just gave you the numbers that people use in surrounding jurisdictions. So if you'd like, I can read you the specific ones. But so, the majority, Gloucester does not allow any. King and Queen, excuse me, King William does not, New Kent does not, King and Queen does not. King and Queen does not. Again, this is visible inoperable vehicles. I'm not talking about how many they allow sitting in the yard that are shielded or screened. Matthews does not. Essex does not. So, no one does. I, I did find some other jurisdictions, but they're not surrounding near us.
Understood.
They're outside.
Understood.
And, but they were like one.
Thank you.
Who was one?
I want to say, actually, I'm not going to say because I didn't write it down. But I do remember there being one.
I wouldn't have five.
But it was not, it was not within a driving hour distance.
It's in North Carolina.
Easy.
Yeah. I apologize, I did not write that one down. You got me on that one, Mr. Ransfield. Okay.
At this time, Mr. Krech will talk on B and C.
The, the point I wanted to bring up, if you look through subsection B, when we went through this and drafted it, you, you have this range, obviously in the residential, in the higher density areas, you're going to want that number, probably zero, probably. In areas like LDR and agricultural, maybe RH, you have large parcels. You may want to jump that number up some. You know, give somebody, you know, if somebody's got 100 acres and they have a junk car sitting in the middle of it, even if you can see it from the road, it's, it's not as objectionable. The point I wanted to bring up, and this was really, we really had a hard time wrestling with this, is LDR is a very odd district in that you can have a one-acre waterfront lot in LDR or a one-acre parcel that would obviously not have the capacity to have a junk car maybe sitting in front of it because it would obviously be fairly obvious to everybody. Or LDR properties could be 50 acres and a farm, you know, with a farmhouse sitting way in the back with a, maybe a car sitting around. So the, I just wanted to make the Board cognizant of the fact that LDR is really the hardest district to wrestle with and try to decide where you want to go with. Because it does have a, many complications. It's, it's a different, very diverse district. It's generally agricultural, but it can have a residential component to it. I mean, there's a lot, the area down at Burnham's Wharf, if you've ever been down that area, that's LDR. And those are one and a half acre lots on the water. So in doing that, it's just, it's just something the Board needs to be aware of as they go forward and they try to formulate where they want to go with this. I wanted to make that clear to the Board because not all LDR is the same. It's the most different type of district. Also, in reference to subsection C, this, this more closely correlates with our zoning ordinance and our junkyard ordinance and our automobile graveyard. But I feel that once the Board settles into where they want to be on this, wherever the end, end is with it, we may have to go back to the zoning ordinance and reconcile it with this ordinance. It's much easier to reconcile the zoning ordinance with this than it is to try to reconcile this with our zoning ordinance, I would say. So that's something that, once the Board settles in, they would initiate an ordinance amendment to review that particular item too. So with that, if there's any other questions you have of me, I'm just going to turn this back over to Mark.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one correction. Pete Matthews allows one inoperable, so I am corrected. Matthews does allow one inoperable vehicle.
Do you recall if it is the same, that for Matthews, is it one for LDR and all of their zoning classes? Or is it?
It's part of their zoning ordinance, which is a little bit different. And it just, it just says the parking of more than one. It doesn't appear to limit it for any zoning. It's just general.
And I, I had one other, I had a real concern at the last meeting. And that was that Middlesex Metals, which is the place that you dispose of, of the cars, has a change from the state that says, it used to be that if you were willing to sign something that said, "I own this vehicle, but I've lost the title and haven't used it for 10 years" or something like, like that, "and I'd like to dispose of it." As long as you were willing to sign this waiver, it would go through. Now there's, I think, a $20 charge by the state. And I think it's really the wrong, really a poor decision on the state because now it, it costs money to dispose of vehicles rather than, or it costs that $20, which, which we, we should be very happy to, to see the, the cars disposed of. But now there's an extra charge on it, so people are going to be less likely to want to dispose of it. And I, for instance, would like to suggest that, that we contact, you know, our state senator or our, our representative and ask them to, to review this with the state. And I hope somebody else agrees with me.
Well, I, I, in terms of the details of disposal, I don't know that. And I think that's a separate issue from the, how the county is going to address or not address, the, the complaints that we've received from citizens who say, you know, "Why is this?" or "What can we do about?" or, you know, a complaint, or a specific complaint. And then the county goes and there's no, no mechanism to address the complaint. I guess I want to clarify on the whole ordinance as it's written. It would remain in terms of enforcement. This is a complaint-driven enforcement would be the policy generally for Middlesex. In other words, it's not like we have a patrol going through the county. It's not up to the sheriff who may see a car or, you know, at any, it's up to, if a citizen calls the county, then you, Mark.
Yes.
Go out there and, you know, look around and say, "We've had a complaint." Is that his?
Generally, it's a written complaint form that I'll receive. And I have to visibly see the vehicles. I can't, if it's gated up, I can't get on the property. I could send a notice, ask a question, but if there's refusal, I cannot access the property.
Okay, so if, if I'm understanding this correctly, and I would say that I appreciate all the work. I know there's a lot. It's always in the details and, and getting this. And I think what we're trying to do is find a solution that suits Middlesex. And I guess if I'm understanding this correctly, that people may have vehicles that are not operating on their property either because they're working on them or they may need them for parts to restore another car or, or address an issue. If those inoperable vehicles are on the property, they could be in, that property would be in compliance as long as there was a fence or a hedge or some sort of screening.
Or behind the building or something.
Okay, behind the building or also with a, the canvas car covers for that car, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's the way this is written. So it seems to me that there's, there's a solution there that could, that could work and address it. You know, I, I, I think private property rights are very important and I, and I, I respect that. I think everybody here does. But I do see sometimes a property when there's one car inoperable and then it do. It seems to sometimes, not always, there's a trend. And before you know it, there's 10. And then it becomes more of a nuisance, I think, for the neighborhood. The other thing I, I like to balance is, you know, I like to enhance or strive for a Middlesex that is really one community and not one community here and then homeowner associations here and there, which are, which are all fine, but that you can end up with two different set communities. And, and it has to do with, you know, restricting prof, private property, whether it's, I don't know, how do your grass or how your trash gets picked up or, or, you know, vehicles, inoperable vehicles. So I, I think that we need to be sensitive to, you know, building one community where we have a shared expectation, you know, and not, not two different places. But that, I would like to be responsive to that. The other thing, and, well, that's kind of overall, but knows what you get. I do, if you take a vehicle to Middlesex Metals, they do pay for the metal, is that right?
They do pay for the metal.
Hardly.
Yeah.
But you could, we could recover the $20 out of that.
That's what they do.
That's, okay.
They take it out.
And.
Yes.
Oh, do we talk about licensed and inoperable? Those are two different types of ordinance, is that correct? Is there some that are just inoperable in some counties require they actually, every vehicle has to be licensed? We're not addressing that, right?
We are. Yeah, we are. It's under inoperable vehicles? Are, are you referring to the fee or the definition of an inoperable vehicle?
I'm referring to the tags.
Okay.
Having a tag on the vehicle.
So the code defines inoperable one as part of it as if you don't have a valid license or state inspection detail.
Right. And that's what we're using?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That, that was the question?
Yeah, it's in the definition we have there.
Okay, that, yes, that's, that's the definition.
Because if it has a tag and inspection, it doesn't make any difference if it runs or not, right?
Right, exactly.
But if we do this, we have to use that code definition, is that right?
It would be my recommendation. Okay, got it, got it.
Because that was an earlier discussion, I think.
All, all the definitions are from the state code.
Got it.
They should copy them.
With the exception of screening, we use that as a.
Yeah, screening would be more defined.
We use surrounding jurisdictions for that.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
So I think we're on section D.
Look, can we go back to C? I wanted to touch on that. I know Dave talked a little bit about it. But A and B were, were discussing the numbers in those districts. And also again, C is combining actually all the zones in there, but it's actually defining even if shielded or screened from view by covers unless they're kept within a fully enclosed building or structure. That's addressing a total number. So even if you have inoperable vehicles that are behind the fence, it's still giving a base number of, of that. And we left that open for you all to discuss. So if you define a number in A and B, I think C would have to be a total of, if you did three, then we would have to look at C. Y'all would determine whether or not that would be that number or it'd be a higher number. You would allow to go above that. We've left all those kind of empty. But on to D. D is dealing with businesses that are already licensed to operate. You've got some salvage yards and anything like that, scrap processors, scrap dealers. But I wanted to do, stress on that, that also any located on any properties and accessory use to active agricultural operations. So we did address that, that we're, we're including the agricultural aspect in there. It's, it's not going to basically apply to some of those districts. So it just does benefit the farmers in, in a little bit that they can have some there.
Mark, just real quick before we move too far afield of C, and this may be more a question for Dave. If someone had 20 inoperable motor vehicles stored behind screening, they could apply to become a junkyard, right? We have, I think that's allowed by special exception.
Depending on where they're zoned, they could apply.
So if someone wanted to store more vehicles than what this particular ordinance would provide, they have a recourse, they can come in and apply to be a junkyard.
They can apply to be a junkyard, follow the process and probably get approval of some sort.
And a business license and all those things.
And a business license and all the other things that come with it. But yes, C does address kind of if they want to have more, they can go that route. If not, it puts a limitation on if they have 20 behind a fence. There's a limit to how many in total they can have on the property, which is what we want y'all to figure out what we can do with. We'll go on to, section E and F actually are kind of together. And this section will deal with where if we have a formal complaint, written complaint received, the process would start with a, a notice that would be sent out from the zoning office, notifying them that they could possibly be in violation. And it'll give them 15 days after written notice. If they fail to remove or, or correspond and contact us, then we'll have the ability to remove the vehicle from the property and put a lien on the property. And that is section E and F. But then on to section G will also be where the route that we're actually more taking now is we'll send the notices and we'll actually get with the county attorney and do a legal process through the court to have the property cleaned up or the vehicles removed at that point. And I think that's about what I have to talk about on, on that section. The annual license tax for inoperable motor vehicles. I'll let Heather discuss some of that. And I'll say if there's any questions.
Thanks, Mark. So for section three, this is the other thing that the Board asked for. You'll see that I highlighted a memo before we got into the ordinance, kind of addressing these different things. But I use the exact same language that York County used. York County is the only surrounding jurisdiction that I found this in. I will advise that York has not, the treasurer's chosen, I do not know why, has not actually assessed the fee. And I stated that in my memo to you. I also raised to the Board as consideration, as I did in my memo, that section three needs careful consideration moving forward. I think most importantly, it arises to who would enforce and assess this fee? How would this work? So it's just there for your consideration.
I, I, I personally am not in favor of section three.
Okay.
I agree. That's the one part of the whole thing that I just, if we're trying to get these vehicles removed or screened, that's one thing. But if we're just making it harder for people to work on their cars, I don't, I don't, I don't see what we're doing there.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Since we're seeing a little bit of consensus, can we maybe advise staff on section three and see if we can come back to the other sections? Because I think that's where we're trying to go with this. Chip and Wayne, how do you feel about section three?
I don't care for it.
You, you don't like it either?
No, I don't.
So I, I think we can go ahead and remove section three.
Okay. Remove section three. Okay.
And section one's just definitions?
Yes, sir.
So if, if it would please the Chairman, I'm happy to walk through my thoughts on two and see if everyone else violently disagrees or if there's any consensus potential. Okay. So the $100 license is section three, we talked about that. Two A, for me, I would make that number zero, just like all the surrounding similar counties. Two B, I would make that one. And the reason for that is, I think, you know, hearing some public comment on this earlier today, there are some areas of our community that are probably more appropriate to have one, but certainly not seven or 15. That's my personal opinion. I think one in LDR, A in RH could be acceptable, but I could also be amenable to that being zero. C, I would kill C entirely. I, I don't understand why we would.
May I address that?
Please.
Sorry, I had to cut you off. So that, that's addressing the concern zoning brought up is the concern that if we say, put up a fence, that we will essentially have a continuation or an increase of inoperable vehicles simply behind a fence, which is a zoning issue.
It becomes a junkyard.
It becomes a junkyard, an unlicensed junkyard is the concern. And so in drafting this, I was trying to say, okay, you can have.
I think I follow. So let's, let's run that hypothetical. Someone has 30 vehicles and has been having them exposed and this ordinance passes and suddenly they put up a fence. If they already had 30 vehicles, shouldn't they already be approached about becoming a junkyard? And whose responsibility is it to do that, whether there's a fence there or a screen or not?
So in your example, it would require a written complaint? And if we received one, we would investigate it to see codes and compliance would determine if it is in fact an automobile graveyard?
Right.
And if it met that or.
How many vehicles have to define a junkyard?
So that varies. That would be based on discretion and review of the situation. The state code references, it was starting up, I believe around five for its definition. So I think 30 is not necessarily a good example. I would say more like.
10.
10 would be a more.
Okay. Okay.
So, this was just, the thought process behind this was, there was concern from zoning, a fence would go up, and there would still be an increase of abandoned car, inoperable vehicles placed behind the fence, and now we wouldn't be able to see it to address it. And so, that's what I put it in there for. Now, whether you think it makes sense or we need it, that's up to you.
Understood.
That was the thought.
So, for me, I still kill C, but it's not a deal breaker for me.
But it would be nice if the state had a requirement for what be, when it becomes a junkyard.
There's a lot that would be nice if the state would do differently.
Well...
You know what I mean? Like, we can't, we're, as citizens, we can sort of rally and go to the state and ask them to do these things, but in the interim, we have to...
No, no, but I would think that the state would have some requirement. What defines the junkyard?
Having survived a lot of the discussions when I was planning director centered around Middlesex Metals, I would highly recommend you keep C in there and plug a number in that one.
Like I said, I'm just one opinion. I'm just one opinion. I can live with it.
Right. I mean, it started off smaller, and then it continued to expand, and I think the only persons that won out in that debate in the long run were the attorneys.
Yep, that's fine. For D, in my opinion, shielded or screened from view definition, to me, that's what we're trying to get some of these people with cars that are inoperable to do, is if they want to work on them, just don't put them right in our face and put a screen up and keep them. And we don't want the hundred dollar license, but to me, a car cover isn't going to do it. I've seen what car covers look like after sixteen years in the sun, and it's technically a car cover, but it's going to look like a trash car.
See, that...
No, go ahead.
Are you referring to the screening under...
The definition of shielded or screened includes a car cover.
So, I would say, again, if we received a written complaint and the car cover has deteriorated in which you can now see the inoperable vehicle, codes and compliance could then determine it was in fact a violation.
I guess so, yeah. You have opaque, defect-free. Okay, I can back down from that. Finally, my last two are also on two D. The provisions of this section shall not apply to certain businesses. I understand automobile repair facility, automobile salvage dealer, salvage dealer, scrap processor, and then the other exception to the exception. Why is an automobile dealer allowed to keep vehicles that don't work? If there's all the exceptions to address the repair facilities, the salvage dealer, you see what I'm saying?
It's listed in your code, Mr. Coons.
Oh, I don't think we can get into...
An automobile dealer.
To automobile dealers.
It's a code requirement.
Yes.
So, I take that. Then that's my sum total.
And E is okay?
Oh, I did have a question on E, thank you. Is that fifteen calendar days or fifteen business days?
It can be either one. It's a good point.
I would recommend, I would recommend we make that one or the other and make it clear. I couldn't care less which one it is. I just want the clarity.
What would you prefer?
Business.
Business. And if you notice, it would be a total of thirty days because we would give initial notice.
Yes, understood.
Okay. So, the uncertainty as I hear here at this point, if there is consensus, is a number for C, what we would envision as a junkyard. And again, this is to come up with a draft that we can actually publish and put out for public comment, correct?
That's right.
Yes. Okay, so, this is not the final, it's something to put out there and hear about. I just think a number...
Five?
Five.
Five.
That was the number I heard. Yeah.
Let's see.
I think you make a good point in bringing up that this is just for draft, though. It takes a little bit of the pressure off because we are going to get public comment, so that's helpful.
Well, we need public comment because it's, I mean, we have heard from public who say, I want that, those junk cars gone. What do I need to do? And we've heard that more than once, and we've basically been said, and there's not much we can do. And so, this is something we can do, but there are, you know, reasons that people have to have the cars, and we need to know.
Yeah.
What about section G?
But we are requiring that some citizen requests...
There has to be a complaint.
Written complaint, yes.
Not just a telephone call, but a written complaint.
Pardon?
Not just a telephone call, but a written complaint.
Right.
Oftentimes, people want to complain anonymously, and that's never worked out for anyone's best interest.
Somebody said, what about...
Our county attorneys asked for clarification on G. We need to plug in a number punishable by a fine, if not more than...
To me, two hundred and fifty is fine, but my question would be, what if somebody just is willing to continue to pay fines and it doesn't get the thing addressed other than building our coffers at two hundred and fifty dollars per offense? Is there something that covers this from that person that's just like, yeah, sure, whatever?
So, the way this would work again is, this would actually go to court, and I would ask the judge to order, award a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars. This is a court action, so then the courts would be involved. So, if they continue to disobey the courts, then we have remedies within the court.
No, I'm saying, if they followed the rules, here's your money, no big deal, I'll keep paying.
But the court, the judge, that's how you can do it.
They'll be in violation of a court order at that point, and then they'll be in front of the judge. If they disobey the judge, they can't just continue.
I'm not making myself clear. I'm saying they dragged the person to court.
Right.
The guy pays his fine.
Oh, no, 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 it's not a payable fine, no, sir. So, this is like, so the way it works is you remove the car and you get a fine.
Right.
That covers it.
There's a court order to follow the ordinance.
Yep, got it. Thank you.
This is in a prepayable offense.
And each day.
Yep.
Yes.
To me, that's two fifty, but I feel like I'm the only one talking, so I'm interested.
I agree, two fifty. Well, we've been given the suggestions from other jurisdictions of five hundred or two fifty, two fifteen seems like a disincentive.
There are some jurisdictions that went further. I thought that was a little extreme. They went to a class one misdemeanor, which is jail time, and I didn't get the impression from the board you desired that. So, this is the more reasonable.
But we are still saying that you can have an inoperable vehicle as long as you put a license on it.
By definition, then it would not be inoperable.
Then it would not...
License and inspecting.
So, you know, if you want to have ten inoperable vehicles and you're willing to license them and...
Or you can screen them.
Or you can screen them. I kind of agree with you. The covers, I...
But it is covered. It has to be opaque and not defective.
Yeah, okay.
So, we have a light to stand on there if somebody's just going to throw a painter's cloth on or something.
Yeah. Well, it says it's got to be a manufactured cover.
Yeah.
I'm understanding that this is work in progress to move to a point that we could present something for the public to respond to. Are we satisfied that we've given Heather? Okay, what else do you want?
So, you think, so the consensus is for G, two hundred and fifty dollars.
That's what I was hearing.
That's, I heard from two.
I would say a hundred, but...
Could you go with two fifty for the purpose of the public comment?
Yeah, how about two hundred and forty?
Okay. I didn't hear a direction for A, and, I mean, I heard from John. John recommended for A, zero. I need a consensus what A, B, and C is, please. I heard from John.
Let's do A. I was zero, what are others?
What do I put, what do we fill in the blank with?
Zero.
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 Okay, so, zero.
Wayne, is it two?
I'm two.
Are we willing to call that a consensus, or is it, Wayne, do you want to make an argument for two that we might all come your way?
I just want to talk with Mark for a minute. Mark, come back up here a minute, because we got a little situation up in the other mechanic where I'm at.
Yes, sir.
All right? So, what we have in place now, all right, I know we got a situation up there, all right? Because you got to understand, up in the county is more rural, more farms, different things like that. So, you got to realize that, because all parts of the county is not the same. That's what you got to realize. Then you got to realize the situation of people that are living there, all right? We got a little issue up there, I understand, and what is the process we got now? Okay, well, okay, I know we got tires and different things like that on the property. Give me the situation of what we have in place now.
To handle the complaint that you're talking about that we have now?
Right.
Solid waste. If the vehicle number there is, say, I'll use ten, if there are ten vehicles on the property, we don't have an inoperable vehicle, or it's all I have is a junkyard. So, I have to define it as a junkyard. If they're all together, they're mechanically run, there's nothing I can do. And someone can complain that there's too many vehicles. There's nothing, there's nothing wrong with that at this point.
Because they're operable.
But they're all operable. They don't, but it goes by the definition of an operable vehicle, but we don't have that. I'd have to look at it as a junkyard. But, and that's the situations I get in is where there's multiple vehicles, and all they need is a battery, and you can put one in each one, they all run on their own power. They're operable. But I think what you're addressing, if I may comment on A, is some of those areas up in that, in the Jamaica area, are LDR and your agricultural stuff, so they're a larger...
Rural husbandry.
Right. Rural husbandry.
Agricultural.
Yeah, that would probably define more in the section B or two B, but again, your example is I have to deal with solid waste, and I have to look at it as more, there are zoning violations, and there are also other ordinance violations that I have to address. And I have to, Heather and I have worked long on some letters trying to separate those because there's processes I can go through with a zoning violation and one that I can go with a solid waste violation.
So, Wayne, I think you can...
I just wanted to make it clear for the citizens, too, you know, they're saying, you know, we're saying one thing, there are many different things. To make it clear, and that's what I wanted, to make sure everybody know that it's clear of what's going on.
I think you convinced me, though, if what you're saying, I think you're meaning for B because it's LDR, agriculture, and rural husbandry. I was saying one for two B. I could be brought over to two for LDR, agriculture, and rural husbandry, but for the rest of the zoning districts, I'm still at zero, but I could see going to two for the more rural parts of the community where, what you're talking about.
Do you want to put at least ten acres into that requirement?
I don't think so. I think we're probably overstepping a little bit if we start...
Yeah.
Yeah, I, so, I don't know if the consensus is still zero on A, because we had four of us at zero, and Wayne, maybe you could go to zero on A if you moved that two to B.
Yeah, I'll be all right with that.
So, I'm at zero and two for A and B, and so is Wayne. And I think everybody else said they're at zero for A. Can everybody join us at two for B?
No problem, yeah.
We've got four?
I think I'm okay with that. Does that present an enforcement issue when you, or is that just, you can just figure out the zoning and...
What I'd like to clear up on A, B, and C, this is for inoperable vehicles that are in clear view.
Correct.
So, if you, again, if you are in a residential area and you have two cars that are in car covers, they're not inoperable, or they're behind a fence. So, if you put zero, but someone had two behind a fence...
Doesn't matter.
It meets the ordinance as defined. This is vehicles in open view. So, and then C would define the number, the total.
Right. So, if you put two in B, that would be two inoperable vehicles in open view.
In LDR, agriculture, rural husbandry.
Okay. I don't believe it'll be an issue in enforcement because once we receive the property address, then we can check the zoning map. Yes, ma'am. That's a question.
Yeah, I can live with it.
I think we're, A, zero, B, two, C, five.
Yep.
D, we have to keep it whether I like it or not. What do we need to tell you on E? E, make it business days, is everybody okay with...
Yes.
Making that more clear. F?
Two fifty.
Two fifty, we've, no, every cost what?
This allows you, it'll be a lien attached to the property if we have to remove the vehicle.
Okay, is everybody okay with F for public comment to go hear what the citizens say? And for G, are we all okay with two hundred and fifty dollars? I believe we said we were. And then for three, I think we all agree, we don't want a hundred dollar permit fee, so we're abolishing three. Do you need anything else, counsel?
That is what I needed. Thank you very much.
Well done to you.
All right, John, nicely navigated. I almost hate to ask if there's any other questions or comments on inoperable vehicles. Moving right along, Kevin Gentry and John Kuntz.
Would the board want us to advertise this for public hearing in October?
Is that timing good?
That's a yes for me.
Okay. I would say that I don't see an emergency to it if there's other work that comes ahead of that. Don't prioritize. This is not a, this is not a number job one type of deal, but if it fits, let's do it. If not, and it goes to November, I don't see any harm done.
Okay.
Is that good?
Yeah.
All right. Let's see, Kevin Gentry and John Kuntz are going to address us on the broadband authority.
All right, so, we're coming to you today to talk to you about Gloucester County is doing a grant.
Sorry, Kevin, just, we're not asking for money.
No, we're not. Sorry about that. Yeah, first and foremost, we're not asking for money. Did someone faint in the back? All right.
At a close second, you're not asking for money.
Okay. So, Carol Steele from Gloucester County had approached the broadband authority to talk to us about what they were doing in Gloucester, and one of the strengths, we know, wireless broadband, which is something that they're looking at, is the ability to cross boundaries. Light Middlesex, they're submitting a grant to reach unserved areas of their county. If the grant is approved, Gloucester's broadband deployment will include a new tower in Harkam, which is in very close proximity to the Pianakank River. The new tower will employ three hundred and sixty degree antennas, and as you can see in the graphic here, has the potential to serve up to one thousand structures in Middlesex County. Now, that's, mileage may vary. We don't want to overpromise and underdeliver here, but since it's not costing us anything, there's a potential there that we can capture some folks who currently don't have broadband. There's no additional equipment that's needed to reach Middlesex. Once the tower's up, there'll be a company called Open Broadband, and they will be the ISP, and if Middlesex County residents want to connect to that service, they can do so, contingent upon the grant being approved. So, what we've asked the board for is simply a support letter saying that Middlesex County supports Gloucester's efforts to, for their broadband project.
What about our three towers?
Currently, we don't have any wireless assets on our towers. It's something that's been talked about in the past. It's an expensive project proposition, so it's something we may pursue in the future. One of the issues that we have, like a lot of folks do, is the topography, the tree canopy and things like that, and also, well, that's the main thing, but they're looking at doing an LTE tower, which could reach a lot of folks. It could be something that we do in the future, Pete.
And by the way, if you do have tree canopy, you can go to an antenna and then hardwire from that...
Right, right.
That antenna to 20 different homes in an area.
Potentially. But, you know, everything has a cost. So when you look at, you know, who you can serve and what it's going to cost to get them, that's the, that's the issue that we always run into. We know a take rate is about 50%. What we've tried to do is, is find these little pockets of enthusiasm where we're getting communities to buy in. And one of the communities I'm working with now is Deer Chase, which actually will come in the cone of uncertainty there that they can actually potentially, potentially get broadband.
This is why I let Kevin do the presentation after the broadband.
I believe this dot is your house, Mr. Kuntz.
I think Kathy's in there too, but I've got broadband.
Is there anything you want to add?
No, this is just, it costs us nothing and it may help us. There's no guarantees. But we're putting as many irons in the fire as we can, especially for the parts of the county that are away from where the fiber is.
So this is a letter that would support their grant application, is that correct?
Yep.
Yes.
And the other thing is the regional vatty that we did was with 6 other counties. It was decidedly not Gloucester because Gloucester has a different fiber provider. So they're looking at something slightly different in this tower. But it would benefit us. So it's a, it's a no-brainer, as they say.
You ready?
I'm ready.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize you to sign this draft letter to Carol Steele, Deputy County Commissioner in Gloucester, in support of their application for broadband coverage through a fixed wireless deployment.
Thanks ma'am. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, before I get away from the podium, I'd just like to sneak in a little bit of kudos to that Virginia Rules camp that was held last week. And I know I saw you and Kathy there and my youngest son Nick was there. He's not a very gregarious kid, but I'm going to tell you, the encouragement I saw from those campers and from the facilitators there, it was amazing. And I want to give the Sheriff's Department and Melinda and all those folks kudos because they did a great job.
That's a, that's a top drawer activity for this county, for sure.
I believe a certain camper was named Camper of the Week, right? You're on camera.
I wasn't going to brag, but yeah.
Nick's Camper of the Week. I'll brag on his back.
All right, moving right along to the Virginia Department of Aviation Conference update. Mr. Jamie Barnhart.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Jamie Barnhart here. I was happy to say that y'all blessed me with the opportunity to go up and visit with the wonderful people at the Department of Aviation. Why was it important that we send somebody up there to the Department of Aviation? Obviously, right now, well, with an airport, obviously, right now, there's a lot of communications that are occurring. I wouldn't say lobbying because that sounds like somebody's getting paid to do that and I don't think that's the case right now. But we had a, we had a meeting, a very fruitful meeting with the number one decision maker. We, Chip Holt, Oscar Barber, myself and another board member had a meeting with the number one man, the number two man, decision makers at the Virginia Department of Aviation. These are the people that help us decide whether or not going forward with any operations at the airport is recommendable to the board. We also met with Cheryl Holleran. This was all in a scheduled meeting. The outcome of the meeting didn't determine anything, but as you probably know, the 2 people, Mark Flynn and Cliff Burnett, who are the number one and number two people, will be coming to our October meeting. So that was the outcome of the meeting. What else occurred? One of the things that I really wrapped my arms around by the opportunity of being there, not only meeting with all the commercial representatives, not meeting with all the airport operators. But the one thing, I went to a seminar. They have a lot of little seminars where, you know, you can learn how to, not polish your airplane, but polish your airport. And one of the things that I walked away from there with is, it was a speaker, a very dynamic speaker. And she talked about, hey, is your EDA connected to your airport? And I started thinking about that. I said, you know, it's almost like 2 separate turtles in the field going the same direction and they don't know what the other one is doing. Whereas if they combine their efforts, it might be a good opportunity. You know, we, is the airport meeting the expectations of the growth that is basically projected by the EDA? Is the EDA staying in touch with the airport? There's a lot of questions there. So it really prompted me to think about the connectability of the airport, not just as, well, I'm sure it's going to be okay because, you know, airplanes come in and airplanes bound to make us money. No, it needs to be better and bigger than that. It needs to be at least talking, you know, the 2, 2 parties talking. That's the biggest thing that I left there with. No different, Hotel Roanoke. Spent a lot of time, spent a lot of time with the people that run the Department of Aviation. And I had the opportunity, the state of Virginia, every year invites an airport manager to go to Oshkosh, which is the Holy Grail for aviation in the summertime in July. I think they must have gotten confused because I'm not an airport operator, but they decided to invite me. And I spent a lot of time with Mark Flynn and a lot of the other people there at the airport. So I'm proud to say that Middlesex County on a lot of different levels is very well connected to the state of Virginia. And if we decide to move forward with the opportunity of the airport realignment, as I've been told to say, realignment, I think we're very well poised to come out with a, with a, with a wonderful facility that can better serve Middlesex County than it's being served right now. Any questions?
They're coming to the October meeting here?
Yes.
Yes. And.
I'll make that.
Sorry to make it so short. I mean, I could, you know, extend it out of about a half an hour if y'all want to hear it.
Where's the hook, Joe?
I'm going to watch the circle in the floor.
What plane card are we, we, the Department of Aviation did something new this year. Was it your idea to promote airports in the state by doing plane cards?
Well.
Decks of cards and each, and each card was a different airport.
There must be 52 then.
We are the, I can't remember what Hummel was that.
If we're 53, I know what card we're going to be.
The, we were the king of spades.
King of spades.
We were the king of spades.
Huh.
Well, this year, we went up to the Virginia, I mean, we went up to Oshkosh. Like I say, this is a, three quarters of a million people come from just about every country in the world come to this as the aviation Mecca. The state of Virginia rents a space about 20 feet. And they have representatives there that basically say, you know, Virginia is your destination. And if you're passing through, this is what we've got. We've got Williamsburg, we've got Richmond. And of course, we have Middlesex County because I was there. And, and as part of what I wanted to do, because, you know, you tell me, I forget. You show me, I remember. You involve me and I become part. I remember hearing that. And I wanted pictures of Williamsburg and apparently, you know, they have to be extremely careful about the protocol of representing one airport over the other and that sort of thing. But what came out of it, a young man at the aviation department said, hey, we got an idea. We're going to have a deck of playing cards and on different cards are going to be different airports. So I made sure that the picture of Hummel Airfield was extraordinarily good because Tom Chalimia is an amazing photographer. And it all came together. So there are a lot of decks of cards that have Middlesex County floating around. Who knows, maybe Greece, maybe Italy. I mean, Middlesex County is not just regional now, it's international. Hummel International. That's what I call it. You see the tie-in?
Transmit it.
You see what I'm going with? Yeah, that was, that was real exciting. I was flattered and humbled by the opportunity to go up and represent the state of Virginia up there. And of course, Middlesex County became a big part of it. But I'm as proud of Middlesex County as I am of Virginia.
Thank you, Jamie. Any questions?
Um, we have next event at Hummel International coming up.
Yeah, I heard about that. Yeah, I heard about that. Last weekend, I think it's the 28th.
28th.
28th of September. In fact, at the board meeting, our regional representative spent a lot of time, I'd say proportionally, a lot of time talking about the fact that Middlesex County is well vested in the community by having wings, wheels and keels. And felt pretty good about what we're doing. You know, I know in the, in the throes of budget and trying to decide who gets a cut and who doesn't, I get it. But I tell you, over the years, the investment in that particular arena has attracted so many thousands of people and its connectability is basically making the airport become part of the community and the community becoming part of the airport. So that, that's been a pretty good, and y'all are all welcome.
You can bring your juice and a half.
All right, just choices, choices, choices.
There's a couple of us.
Jamie, thank you, sir.
At the Maritime Museum on the 28th.
And we appreciate the ground transportation in Roanoke also.
Anytime. Thank you.
Next item of business, we've been approached by whom, Betty, to do the proclamation for Constitution Week?
Carolyn Cook from the Cobb's Hall chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution.
Okay. We've been asked to do a proclamation for Constitution Week. Is it, is it the board's? Would you like me to read this and decide if we want to do this or not?
I'm.
It's a no-brainer.
If I could make a motion, I move that we approve to make this proclamation without reading it.
Okay. I second. I observed, well, I was going to say I reserve the right to second one every now and then. Since I was going to have to read it, I was going to second it. But the second by Mr. Masfield, is any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, so ordered. Betty, I think you've got something on the Wings, Wheels and Keels grant.
I do. And, and I did get an update late Friday that the grant is actually sitting on the director's desk, ready for his signature. So hopefully we'll get this actually in the mail tomorrow. But I submitted a grant application on behalf of the county and the Friends of Hummel to the Department of Aviation for $9,417.50 that we are, we are waiting, as I said, for that final approval. And that reimburses 50% of the majority of the expenses. There are a couple expenses that don't get reimbursed, but a majority of the expenses of the Wings and Wheels and Keels project, both actual dollars that are spent, but, and also some in-kind expenses that we are able to collect. Such as, we have some property owners, surrounding property owners that, that we, we rent property from for the event and we're able to charge that back.
This is just about the same amount each year?
Yes. Gone up a little bit.
Would you entertain a motion?
Yes, sir.
A move that we accept the grant and authorize the chairman to sign the acceptance when received pending review and acceptance by the county attorney.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, so ordered. And then Betty, I think you've got a budget supplement request.
I do. Just, this is in, in and out basically. A check was written back in June of 2019 that we are voiding and rewriting it and splitting it between 2 vendors out of this fiscal year. So I need to that, those funds put back into that account so that we can take care of that.
And that's budget supplement request FY 2020-11.
11, yes, for $7,974.38.
I move that we approve FY 2020-11.
Moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
This is, this is just a transfer of funds.
Pretty much, yes. We didn't spend them.
Okay.
We can't spend them.
I vote aye.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, so ordered. All right, county administrator update.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I've got a couple of items. I'll try to keep them brief, given the, given the time. First of all, you have a copy of my report, but kind of want to state this for the public's benefit who do not receive the board package. There've been a rash of ransomware attacks on local government school systems and whatnot. The most recent, up until today, was New Kent. Since the drafting of this report, it's my understanding King and Queen's been hit as well, where the entire school records have been locked out due to a ransomware attack. So please, if you have not read my report, read that section. I'll cut a lot of voluminous detail short by saying, when in doubt, before you open any email or any kind of suspect file, call Kevin. And he'll guide you through that. Next item I want to report on is I had a very successful conference meeting with DEQ regarding their clean water revolving loan funds here in the state of Virginia as a potential source for financing the sewer project in our partnership with Hampton Road Sanitation District. You have a copy of the report in your packet, of course. One thing I would like to highlight is the application period for those funds opens up next spring and summer. If we're successful and it does appear that we qualify and it would be a project that DEQ and VRA, the Virginia Resources Authority, would be supportive of, if our applications approved, we could receive interest rates as low as 1.8% on the loans necessary to deploy sewer. That's fairly profound. There, there may even be a possibility, if we improve hardship in serving certain census tracts that have low to moderate income folks, that we may actually receive even a lower rate than 1.8%. Next, we have been meeting with Lancaster County on the Regional Airport Authority Selection Committee. We're still in the process of reviewing proposals for consultant legal services and consultant services for an economic development assessment agreement. The committee plans to meet next in Lancaster County. I think they've come to 3 meetings over here. So it was our turn to meet over in Lancaster. Don Gill, their county administrator, has scheduled preliminarily a meeting on September 20th, on that Friday. And we'll have more to report next month as far as the airport authority or the potential formation of the airport authority and our consultants. Last thing I want to report on, well, actually, no, it's not the last. I want to give the board an update on the YMCA potential lot split. I have contacted our surveyor and they're in the process of drafting a plat along the lines of what we had been talking about in previous discussions, keeping the eastern portion, easternmost portion of the YMCA property or the Old Wilton School property, as I should refer to it, in county ownership. And potentially partially off the westernmost portion that the Y currently inhabit. Next, the board directed staff to pursue some signage of the courthouse complex and the courthouse facilities along, of course, the historic courthouse complex, but also the new courthouse and the recent addition, and salute a professional center on Bowden Street. I have Jody Collier looking into the different sign contractors and sign companies to facilitate a meeting with him and I to kind of discuss some options and go over some costs. Once we get a better idea of what we want to do, we'll put it out to bid and we'll probably get bids from those companies that we have a chat with. Last thing I want to brief the board on, and again, you have a copy of the report in your packet, is the activities of Middlesex Water Authority. Betty and myself, along with Greg Chambers and Kevin Gentry and Peggy Jordan with the Broadband Authority, have been sitting in on many of the farmers markets that are being held at the Delphine Maritime Museum, holding sign-up meetings and easement signing events. They've been somewhat successful to date. Well, at the date of this report, we had 191 temporary construction easements and 26 permanent easements signed. The Middlesex Water Authority, at our next meeting on September the 11th at 6:00 PM, will be discussing what next. We're coming to the end of summer, technically sometime around October 1st. We'll probably start seeing a diminishing in returns on, on our easement signing and what to do next. We have considered various processes, but the most likely process would be that we secure the services of a consultant to do some easement valuations, work with the remaining property owners. And those who are still unwilling to give an easement, we'll be looking at putting under a legal process to secure those easements so we can move forward with the water project. As the board may remember, we are allowed to go out to bid by the USDA as long as we have those easements under a secure process that meets their satisfaction with some likelihood of success of obtaining those easements. And it's something that we're going to be discussing at the September 11th meeting. And there, while these expenses are project eligible for reimbursement by the USDA, when we close the USDA loan, they are not monies that we happen to have on hand at the Water Authority at the moment. when we close the USDA loan, they are not monies that we happen to have on hand at the Water Authority at the moment. So we may be back in front of the board in October with a more robust discussion of that topic and maybe possibility of asking for some funds to help secure the consultant and move those easements into a process to hopefully be reimbursed by the USDA money when we close our loans and get our grants at the conclusion of the project.
I would like to ask you.
Yes, sir.
A quick question. I think we were, we have 650 easements that we need to get agreed to?
473 temporary easements and 88 permanent.
Okay, so over 500?
Yes, sir.
Something like that. And at this point, we've got 140? Is that?
191 temporary and 26 permanent, unless we've got more in since then. And we probably have, because I saw a few people coming upstairs today.
So about half?
Right.
Of what we need? The process at this point is to continue to try and get them to voluntarily?
We're going to, we're going to work the last farmer's market at the Delftville Maritime Museum on September 28th. And we're going to continue to try to work with property owners between now and then. It would probably be October or November before we start the next process.
Do all 500 or plus know that we're requesting the easement? Have you sent them a?
Yes, sir.
You've sent them a letter?
Yes, sir, and some reminders. Yes, sir.
Just maybe five.
So wouldn't it be just as easy to schedule another 250 court appearances to?
Well, we're not quite at that stage yet, but it could, it could potentially happen.
Yeah. I'm just questioning, hiring one more person to tell them that we really would like to get the easement.
You have to go through a process.
Yeah, it's a little different than that, Ms. Mansfield. What a consultant would do is come in and add a third-party, non-biased opinion on value of easement and work with property owners to try to sign those. The USDA, up till now, has politely but very firmly suggested that they consider water line and sewer line, I'm not going to blur the issue, let's just keep it at water, but they consider water lines as a property improvement and therefore the easement should be donated. There are some people that may disagree with that. Some of the easement holders. And what this consultant would do would be value the easement and make sure that the i's and t's in the process that leads up to potentially sending the easement to a legal process are met and met properly. It's something that Heather and my initial discussions with several attorneys that are experts in this highly suggest that we should consider doing. One of the, and it's a, it's a little bit of a nuance there. Back in the old days, county administrator or the town manager would just show up, knock on the door and say, hey, let's work this thing out. The law has gotten very, very strict about processes and procedures that we need to follow to do this right. So if we do end up in a legal process, we'll win.
Right.
And that would be my recommendation, that we do a very tight policy procedure.
Make sure we do.
I'm sorry?
Any idea how much this would cost?
I'll have that information for you in October.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. And I do believe our chairman of the Water Authority is here, Mr. Greg Chambers. And if I know him, he's probably dying to say something, so.
But he recognizes the late hour.
Yes.
Yeah, but it's okay, John. I have a question about the easements. Do people, is there, what are the reasons that people give for refusing, say, a temporary easement?
I think a lot of it is just due to.
Greg, you may want to come to the podium, because we can't get you on the minutes unless you do. I'll attempt to answer that, and I'm sure Greg's got an answer. I've discussed the different scenarios with multiple property owners. Some quite frankly are just against the water system. I'll just call it. Some are against the water system, they prefer it not come in, they don't want to see change. I've also heard from a few that if you put this water line in, my property values are going to go up. I don't want to pay more taxes, so I don't want the water line. They got, if the water line goes in, the property values are going to go up. Others have concerns over landscaping, or they're going to lose crepe myrtles or various types of trees. We usually can work through those issues, but the first two are a little hard, because.
And I think we've had some hostage negotiations where somebody thinks that they're going to get a free hookup for that, and USDA specifically will not let us barter that sort of thing.
Well, and I'll speak to it, Chip, if I may. I don't want to spread rumors, but this one's being heard wide and far in Delftville that, you know, that easement's worth a lot of money. No, it really is not. I mean, because after you value the easements, in some cases, they're worth maybe $10, maybe 25, but people are being told by usually opponents of the water system that that easement's worth $1,000. Thus the reason to bring in a consultant, third-party valuation.
And are the reasons the same for a permanent easement?
Values are a little higher for permanent easements than they are for temporary. And that's because the water line is literally underground across someone's property. Yeah.
Well, because the reason I ask this is, if you look at it from the benefit for the whole county, I mean, I would like to see some community pressure on, for the good of the community. The water system is going to be built, so it's, right? And everybody's committed to that and going forward.
I use the word inevitable at the farmer's market.
Right. So the resistance just costs the county more money.
Correct.
So I think that that.
Well, it costs the users more money, ultimately.
The users, right. The, you're right, the Water Authority investment, I'm sorry, more money. So everyone who will benefit from the water system, which some more tangibly than others, but all of us will ultimately benefit from having this system available in the county, should want and advocate for getting the easements.
Yeah.
It's happening, yeah.
We have neighborhood ambassadors that have, I won't use the word pressure, but they've encouraged their neighbors to sign easements. And in those neighborhoods, we've been somewhat successful in receiving the easements that we need.
The neighborhoods that want water, we have very high feedback rates, okay? The issue, in my mind, is that there are a lot of people that are neutral and just don't want to get off the couch, especially when it's a low-value piece of land that they inherited when their grandmother died in Delftville and they live in Cleveland and they cove in it with their brother who lives in Nebraska. It's just hard to motivate folks to do this. And we're going to have to take some extraordinary steps to close that gap. I mean, Betty knows from, from searching the court records, there's a lot of that, right? I mean, it's, there's a lot of people that it's just going to be hard to get them to take the action that's required, only because of disinterest, unless we fly to Nebraska and knock on the door.
We should have got Jamie to do that on his way to Oshkosh.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to report briefly on that, and we'll have more robust.
Greg, thank you for your dedication to the Water Authority. Greg puts in countless hours.
Yes.
Does that conclude your comments?
That's it.
Mr. County Administrator, how about Madam County Attorney?
I think I've done plenty of talking.
Have you done them, not tonight? Okay. All right, we move on to item eight. Are there any items of unfinished business that any supervisor wants to bring before tonight's meeting? Hearing no unfinished new business that you'd like to bring before tonight's meeting? Hearing none, we will move into supervisors' comments and reports. I think I went ladies first last time, so I'll switch to the other side of the table and go to Mr. Mansfield on the first go.
I don't, I don't give a. Nothing to report.
I just attended the Oshkosh Festival meeting. As you know, the reception will be at F Page, October the 19th, at 6:00 p.m. All the board members will be invited. And the Oshkosh Festival will be November the 1st and 2nd. So it'll be 57 days until the Oshkosh Festival, so they're gearing up for that and all the sponsors and everything like that. I also attended the Sports Complex, and they're just dealing with, you know, paying the fences on, getting contracted, paying the fence on the fields and getting all the fields ready for fall. And I did attend the 1189 Healthcare Worker Concert, which is George Gresham. He's the president from New York. He comes down, he always like to put something in the community, you know, in other words, help the community. It was about 2,500 people came to see the show, Ozzy Brothers, GQ, Angela Wind Bush. And the fire department just hosted. And they passed the bucket around and they got about $5,000 out of the bucket. And then 1189 Healthcare Workers matched that. So that was about a $10,000 for the, the fire department that weekend. Everything turned out right, like the commend, Sheriff Bushy, you know. When you have a group like that, you know, you get stereotyped, but you know, never, nobody gets arrested. Nobody's drinking, you know, there's no drinks there, you know. You just sit there and listen to the music and different things. But everything fine, nobody got arrested, and it was a real nice occasion.
Can we figure out how we can do that twice a year instead of once a year?
Right, right. And that was, that was it, yeah, that's it.
I'll skip over myself and go to Mr. Coons.
I'm having a town hall Saturday at Free Shade Community Center, and that'll be where you can hear even more of my comments.
Very good. Ms. Weinhardt?
Okay, I attended the Community Programs Management Team, just so you know, the annual review of all the cases. And it's just a lot of people working hard and there's a lot of accountability in our social services and efforts to help people who need it. We also had some meeting with Dominion regarding some transmission lines in the airport. Airport services began the interviewing relating to the feasibility study. And the schools' convocation this year, excellent spirit in the schools. And I want to commend them and congratulate them on the first day. And it's, it's very exciting, the level of innovation, enthusiasm, and mutual support that you see there. I also, the Rules Camp, I would agree, is just an outstanding program. It has our support and it's well-deserved support. And commend the Sheriff's Department, the regional jail, Kiwanis, other volunteers. Parents had nothing but very good comments that I heard, and they were just delighted. And also Officer Hart, Melinda Hart, did a lot to bring that together. And Wings and Wheels, September 28th, great community event. And the Harfield Fire Department is a big fundraiser for that, so swing by, do so.
Thank you, Kathy. Kathy and I had two joint efforts this past month. We both met with Dominion about the replacement towers on the south end of the airport. And I don't think we're going to make very much progress on getting them buried. We'll probably get those orange balls put on them, and that'll be, that'll be the extent of that. We also met with folks from Lancaster to review proposals from groups that were going to help us through the legal, economic impact, and engineering of the possibility of us moving to an airport authority and the realignment of the runway. So we'll probably, what'd you say, Matt, the 11th? We're going to get together in Lancaster to.
The 20th.
20th, excuse me.
To review the.
11th Water Authority.
Also attended the Virginia Department of Aviation Conference in Roanoke. As Jamie Barnhart said, meeting with the top dogs and trying to straighten out our airport designation and fix it so that we can get construction monies in addition to the maintenance monies that we currently get on an 80-20 split. Was also invited to go to the Middlesex Public Schools opening convocation and invited to make welcoming remarks, which that's the second year in a row. And I don't get invited to too many places, let alone twice in a row, but we did that. And had, as Greg said, we had a town hall meeting with the last farmer's market at the Maritime Museum, and I thought we had a great turnout. We had a lot of people going through the easements. We had two or three, I think, brand-new sign-ups.
Seven.
Over this past weekend, I got a call because somebody had come down to the museum thinking they could sign up this past Saturday, so I directed them back up to you. Hopefully, hopefully they've caught up with you by now. Also met with the Department of Historic Resources concerning the Cook's Corner Project. There's some, there's some things that may or may not happen with regards to that that can help us possibly with some, with some financing. Had an emergency services committee meeting this past week. And also with Kathy, attended the closing luncheon for the, for the Rules Camp at Camp Yankitank. And that's my second time going over there, and I won't miss one. That concludes my comments. Any other business to come before the open session of this Board of Supervisors meeting?
Mr. Chairman, might we accept public comments before we go into closed session so that if somebody really had something to say, they didn't have to stick around?
I think that's fine, but there's a possibility of something actionable coming out of that. And I wouldn't want to discourage anybody from staying around if they want to. So that's entirely the public's. I don't want to do the public comment twice. I'll do it once now or once at the end?
It should not be a long closed session.
Okay, there you go. In that case, Madam County Attorney, do you have something to read to us?
Yes, sir, I do. Mr. Chairman, we need a motion from the board to convene in a closed meeting pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711a, 3, and 8. This would be for the discussion or the consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body in consultation with the full council regarding such acquisition. And the acquisition is regarding public access. It would also be pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711a, 1, for the discussion of personnel matters regarding the county administrator and the county attorney.
So move. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, hearing none, so ordered. Other members of the public or press that wish to be here when we reconvene? Okay, that's fine. We will move to the other room?
And we'll find.
Yes.
I haven't walked out of the building, but you left with all the employees, he's been outside. I've told him several times to not up here, he don't want to come here.
Why don't you just stand over there and watch TV?
Exactly. Welcome to our world.
I did hit stop, but the green light is still on. Betty, the green light is still on. I've hit stop twice. Do it again. Just pressed it again. Now it's off? It is freezing in here. Freezing. Oh, he didn't say return his town hall. He just said he was having one Saturday. Windhaven's got it. They've had that scheduled since May. Jamie, when it started? That's right, she's coming to get the key Thursday afternoon.
Yeah, that's right. I thought he had, his, his town halls were just doubled during the week.
No, they usually like her on Thursday night. I mean, she's coming with her check in hand Thursday because unless she works, it should be.
I'm going to go print this statement.
All right, no problem.
Thank you. I mean, we ran a lot longer than I called that poor man's guy. He should've stayed in my office. When they ran as a group. Yeah. I mean.
You're going to frame that tee-shirt.
Look at it.
My, granted you're giving it a tee-shirt. Don't, don't knock my tee-shirt.
I'm not knocking it. We can fix that for her.
Yeah.
I went, I went the other year, nice sister's last game I saw her. But that's when we lived in town and I can run down in the ballpark and Yeah, that kind of project there just What now? Wait, come back from that. Let me, let me get more of us. Mother, brother. What's that?
Your hand probably was icing.
Coming, sorry.
Yeah.
I didn't stay the whole time. He's so upset.
He didn't win any snacks, but I gave him peanut butter crackers anyway, money for drink.
All right.
I tried to call her and she didn't answer.
Yeah, but she said she's got it written in there.
But I looked, I mean, obviously I have it on their schedule, but I looked at her handwritten name and it has, it says Friday, September 6th. And that must be why she's planning on getting the key on Thursday.
And John's got I've gotten down for him to the town hall. It's Friday, November the 14th.
He's having one then? I don't know anything about it.
It's on the county.
It's on the Free, on the
Free Shape County.
It would've been nice if you'd given it time because
All right. Thank you, dear. I will.
She didn't want any, she didn't want anybody holding her hand or going with her.
I'm going to call Christine on my way home, see if this date.
All right. Wasn't too long?
No.
I'm ready to go home. That's why.
I'm ready to go volleyball game.
Oh, you go volleyball game? Who you got, granddaughter?
No, no, two kids from church.
Oh, church, church, okay. Well, Abigail, Abigail? Is it Abigail? Not Abigail.
Abby.
Abby, yeah.
Abby and Warm out here.
All right, folks.
Mr. Chairman, we need a motion to certify the following statement. To the best of the members' knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted in the motion by which the closed session was called was considered or discussed in the closed session. So moved.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Hearing none, so ordered. There is no action on the real estate question that we went into closed session on. There is action on the contract for the county administrator. Just as a little bit of background for the, for the citizens in the audience. Last year, a 1% cost of living COLA increase was given to all county employees and it was just a question, since it was specifically written into the county attorney's contract, but not in the county administrator's contract, which way that should go. And it is our feeling that our only two contract employees should be treated in the same fashion with regard to cost of living increases. So, Section 3 on salaries should be amended to include the following. The board has agreed that the county attorney shall receive any cost of living increases when awarded to the Middlesex County employees. The board wishes to treat the county administrator and county attorney equally regarding cost of living increases, therefore, the board agrees to award the county administrator each fiscal year cost of living increases, if any. And that's a big one, because we haven't had one in how long?
It's been quite a while.
When we might have another one would be another question. And the same amount awarded to Middlesex County employees in general affected July 1, 2019, so the chair will accept a motion to that regard. I move to approve the addendum. It's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, so ordered. All righty then. This brings us to public comments. Do we have any members of the public that would like to address the board on any issues of their concerns? Three minutes per citizen. Please come up, identify yourself, name and address. And welcome. Thank you for taking part in your county's government.
My name is Robert Roberts and I live at 52 Lackley's Creek Road. I'm a new resident in Middlesex County. I lived in Gloucester County for 36 years and they got too proud of it there, so I came over here. I moved directly across from Eckert's Restaurant and I have a unique perspective on this, the airport. I look out my kitchen window, you know, daily and I see airplanes coming in all the time and I've had a problem with them flying close to my house and I've requested that they not fly close to my house and I'm getting ahead of myself. We had a prob, an issue with trees that needed to be trimmed and so we got that taken care of and I actually have, I have three trees on 11 acres. Three trees. And I cut down two of them that I didn't have to for safety reasons that were more closer to the runway. And, and I did that for safety. And the pilots are still flying close to my house, if not over my house repeatedly. And I was, I've talked to my supervisor, I've talked to Oscar, I was talking to him on the way up here. And he said that, he said he really can't, they won't do what he wants them to do and he can't, you know, he can't help me. So, you know, I spent a lot of money on that house and, and my wife and myself, you know, we're getting older and it's not, it's not fun living there. And if you can give me some relief with these guys, you guys can control them. It's your airport. And there's a whole field that the state FAA, we worked it out, where they're supposed to be veering off to the right over that field. I don't know why they won't fly over that field. They choose to fly right next to my house, which I consider, you know, that since they've crashed in houses around there just here recently through their, you know, kitchen, living room window and they, fortunately, nobody got killed, but you know, I don't want that to happen to my family. And because there's no need for them to be flying next to my house. And they're directed, they just put signs up that directs them to, to fly over to the field wide open. I don't know why they won't do it, but they won't. So I'm asking, I'm asking y'all at your, your airport, if you can ask them, you know, I'm asking nicely, or, or we're going to leave. You're referring county.
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I ask the gentleman a question?
Yes, sure.
Is that in order, Madam County Attorney?
If, if it's the will of the Lord.
Maybe after the meeting would be more appropriate.
After the meeting, could that be better?
Imagine he would stick around?
Sure.
Okay, and I have one last thing. For the life of me, I don't see how that y'all can put a bigger airport on that little, I just can't see it. I, I see planes skimming over top cars. I have plenty of video and I just ordered a $400 video system and I'm going to put cameras at every angle of that place and I'm going to show everybody what it looks like. I'm surprised they don't hit cars more. And those mega campers, school buses, something to think about. You know, that place is really too small to put a bigger airport. You're pushing it now. And I'm telling you too, I'm going to leave, you know, because I, you know, I don't know if you're all going to help me or not, but if you don't, we're leaving. And we're going to take a beating on that house. We put a lot of money in it. But an authority, you know, you better choose wisely.
Sir, thank you, thank you for your comments, but we run over and if the rest of the board is, is in consensus and want to take some more time, we're willing, but
All right. Well, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else willing to, wanting to address the board at this point? Seeing none, we will close the public comment period and enter in a motion for adjournment. Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, so ordered.